The meeting, Independence Township Planning Commission to order. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next item is roll call.
Bill Scarborough.
Here.
Joe Suter.
Here.
Belinda Billings here. Brian Galley.
Here.
Jason Borsheim.
Here.
Ron Ritchie.
Here.
Tom Patel.
Here.
Everybody has attendance, we have a, we have a forum. A review of the agenda, do we have any requested changes?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Agenda is approved. Uh, copies of, uh, tonight's agenda are on the table. Um, copies of agendas for, and minutes for prior meetings are available on the website. And you can also get agendas on the website, uh, usually the Friday before our planning commission meeting. Right Brian?
Thursday.
Thursday. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda which we just approved. Other individuals participating tonight are Brian Ottman, our planning department director. Uh, Megan Mason Minock of Carlisle Whartman Consulting. Helen Maratti of Noak and Frost. The next item on the agenda is public comments for items not on the agenda. I need to emphasize this is for items not on the agenda. As we get to individual agenda items, you will be given an opportunity to talk about those. So if there's something you want to discuss that's not on the agenda, in just a minute you'll have an opportunity to do that. Um, we ask that you raise your hand, you will be identified and asked you to come to the podium. And, uh, say what you want to say. Um, please keep your comments brief so we keep the, the meeting moving. After everybody in the audience who's talked that wants to, uh, we'll open it up to anybody online. So with that, I will open it up for public comment for items not on the agenda. Anybody out in the audience that like to have something to say? Doesn't look like it. Anybody, is there anybody online Brian?
No.
Okay. Alright, I will close the, uh, public comment for items not on the agenda. Next item is, we have two public hearings. The first one is by Fifth Tavern, seventy-two, two, twenty-eight North Main, Clarkston. Parcel zero eight, two zero, two two seven, zero zero seven. Requesting consideration of a planned unit development amendment in order to make building modifications in outdoor seating at Fifth Tavern. Megan, you want to present a brief summary?
Sure. Um, so this is a review, this, um, is to request an existing building to modify the seating. The applicant's requesting a minor amendment to the previous PUD to provide and, for the expansion of the building. So as part of your decisions tonight, um, if you do choose to approve this, you should make a finding that this is a minor amendment. Um, the enlargement of the floor area is mostly, um, accomplished by enclosing the outside cover area using a nano wall. And a nano wall is a proprietary name for a movable glass, um, door system. Um, we did review this previously, um, and the previous, um, proposal would have resulted in a net gain of thirty-six seats. Uh, for a total of three hundred and one seats. Um, and the issue we raised in that review was parking. Um, with the three hundred and one seats, one hundred and eighty parking spaces are required. That leaves, uh, one hundred and twenty spaces for the remainder of the office. Um, and basically the, the math didn't add up. Um, and so we were, we didn't feel that there was any evidence of adequate parking on the site. The applicant needed to provide a detailed parking study by a qualified professional. Um, and that needed to look at the current parking needs of the site, including evaluation of all the times when there's a peak demand for parking. The applicant's architect did do that parking analysis and that was the big spreadsheet that you got that was multicolored. But you noticed at the bottom it had a lot of red squares. Um, and, um, so really what those red squares say is that between eleven AM and five PM in that parking lot. It was over three hundred and one parking spaces. Um, and that's also I believe with two suites being vacant in the building right now. Um, and so, um, what the current submission is that the applicant revised their plan. And it's mostly their floor plan, which took a lot of seating out, but the square footage is still there. Um, so if you go to that floor plan, you'll see that there's a lot of vacant area where, um, there are, where, there's a lot less tables proposed than they had before. And even if that was a standing area, we feel like we have some concerns that they would be over capacity for parking. Um, and so what, by reducing those seats shown on the plan from eighty-two to forty-four seats. Um, that includes space still represents, um, a potential expansion. And so if you're inclined to approve a minor amendment, we recommend that that approval be conditioned upon the number of sheet, seats shown in, on sheet A three. Um, and any additional seating that appears later, indoor or outdoor, um, would be a violation of that site plan approval.
Are you, um, my understanding is that this site plan has been amended on several occasions in the past. To allow additional, um, square footage, uh, both in medical and perhaps the restaurant. Without any required increase in, um, parking. Can you elaborate on that?
So I'm going to do.
You were Brian?
Yeah, I mean, the, the building to the south was, there was an amendment to this PUD for that. And then basically it created a, an overhang for parking underneath, uh, for doctors in that facility. Um, at one point in time, very early when Mesquite Creek was originally approved, and I believe ninety-four or ninety-three. Uh, they were approved for very marginal outdoor seating. Uh, and there was a whole parking subcommittee of the planning commission that met over that and decided on that. It, it, they never really put outdoor seating back then out there. They never did. So that never materialized, but in any event, Mesquite Creek was approved for a certain amount of parking. Or, uh, not parking, I'm sorry, seating outside. But, um, that was the first iteration of Mesquite Creek, the original one. For those that have been around along, that long. To remember that.
So the addition to the medical building was in the late two thousands, I think.
I, I believe so, yeah.
Eight, nine, ten.
Something like that, yeah. Yeah, and it was the very southern, southerly building. If you drove out to the site and drove around back, you'd see the, you know, that kind of overhang where the doctors are up top and the cars are under the canopy or the cover.
And that, that was really created based on, uh, uh, their first design for the addition, uh, didn't have enough parking.
Correct.
So that's how that overhang parking, uh, was established.
That's correct.
Um, I, I recognize your comments on some confusion over the seating. Um, and how many spaces, I can't quite come up with some of the numbers you've mentioned. But I don't know if that's important because it seems to me that there's just a lot of confusion over it. Um, I was out there and in the area that is proposed to still be outside, there are currently twenty-one tables there. And they're showing, I think it's eight. So it is, in my estimation, it's, it's clear they're understating the, uh, potential seating. And that, that makes it very confusing. Any brief comments from the commission, then we'll see if there's comments from the public?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, uh, I guess to clarify what you just said, I think some of the, the seating is in that overhang area though too, when you count the twenty-one, right?
No. It, I, I, you know where the, the, the pillars are, the brick pillars?
Yeah.
I assume that's where the, uh, the new addition will end. I counted everything outside of that.
And there's twenty-one tables outside of that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's why I didn't know if your counting the ones under the overhang.
Yeah, no, I did not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was just, just wondering because there was lots of comments about if it remains open and if it isn't used, blah, 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 blah. You know, it would mitigate the, the significance of the deficiency in parking. What I'm wondering is how does that get monitored? Because there's statements in here like, if they change this, if they change that, then it will be a, you know, a violation of site plan approval and et cetera, et cetera. Comments like that. Who's going to monitor this? Because it's, if, if this, if this parking spaces are going to be overutilized, if that's the right word. Um, by the tavern at the expense of the patrons or customers of the medical offices. Who, 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 whose issue is that? Do we monitor it? Does the planning commission monitor it? That's a silly question, I know. Does the planning department monitor it?
Between planning and building and fire.
But.
But do you?
Yeah, we're gonna have to. I mean, it's part of our, our oversight, yeah.
But if, if by chance, if hypothetically, we approve this with no additional required parking. And it does create parking problems, we've already approved it. There's, there's nothing we can do to go back and undo it, is there? So it's, we're really, if that situation arises, we're penalizing the other tenants, correct?
Correct.
That answer your question, Joe?
Yes.
Anybody else?
The only thing I would say is if the square footage is already there. How do you monitor it? I mean, I mean, if the square footage is there right now.
Well, if, if, if our approval is based upon a certain amount of seating and they exceed that. We do have some recourse if we can stay on top of it.
Fire department makes regular inspections to every restaurant in town and so does building official. So it's pretty common.
When you say regular, what does that mean exactly?
Uh, it's at least quarterly. That I do know. So that's how it's monitored.
The fire department puts out a, um, report every month. It's in the, um, the, uh, board packet for the regular board of trustees that you can get. Um, he, they, at least once a month they put it out and in that packet it has how many, uh, inspections that they've done or places they've visited. So it's listed in there, so.
Do we inspect every business or just certain like high traffic ones or what?
Every single business gets inspected because they, they check for safety measures like fire extinguishers, exit lights, et cetera. So they're all inspected. Ansel systems in restaurants are a big factor because that's how a couple of restaurants have burned down in this township, so.
Yeah, the fire marshal does a inspection on completion and a yearly inspection to make sure it's in compliance. I've been through several with them.
Yeah.
I, I guess I'll chime in, it's, I mean, I've been to the restaurant a hundred times and probably more when it was Mesquite Creek. But that's just because it was there in the town for longer. Um, it's, it's a great restaurant in my opinion. Um, obviously peak times are Friday evenings and Saturdays. On that, you know, rare, non-humid seventy-five degree day, I've been out on that patio when it's been packed and I found a parking spot. On the weekends, there is no crossover. The doctor's offices are closed. You know, obviously Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, there's probably never an issue. The only issue I could foresee is maybe on a Friday, but I, being at that restaurant that much over the last forty years. I've never not been able to find a spot, so. And, and to the chair's comment, there is more seating out there. So I'm still finding a spot with them seating more people. So I, I don't know how much reliance I put on the parking study myself. Because there are spots always. You might have to walk a little farther and go all the way around back and say darn. I'll meet you guys in a minute, I gotta go around back and find a spot, but there's always open spots. And so.
So I'll chime in on that too as well, like say, uh, there's been a couple of times on Friday nights, Thursday or Friday nights, I've had to park in the back. For the most part, I've always found a parking spot in the front every time I've been there, so.
I would, I drove through there yesterday about between one and one-thirty. And I started counting empty spaces and I, I got to fifty and I said, this is like, you know, I wasn't even halfway through. And, and then today I drove through there around two-thirty or three. Weren't as many vacant, but there, there was still a fair amount, I mean, pretty much the whole restaurant side was vacant. Um, I do think busy time at the doctor's offices in the morning, um, that's a slow time at the restaurant. Um, and, uh, I've been reading a lot about, on, on a lot of these planning publications about parking requirements and when you have too much of a parking requirement, it ends up a waste, wasted use of land. And we end up looking at seas of asphalt and I'm not in favor of that. And, and I, I, I think we, our many zoning ordinance in the past have been a little too stringent on requiring parking. Um, so I, I don't want to do too much, but I also don't like making a decision based upon misrepresented information. So I'm all, um, it, I think it'd be my preference to get correct representation and then we make a decision based on that, but.
The park, the parking study, um, does that consider all, like, the full restaurant, the full medical, everything altogether, all at once?
Can I, can I ask you to hold off on that? Because it.
Oh, yeah.
It was my intent after we do the public hearing to ask them to explain their parking.
Oh, okay.
Because I've, I've got a lot, I, I'd find it confusing.
Questions in the building too, I guess, too.
Yeah.
I don't understand it.
Yeah. So, um, anybody else, I'll ask for some comments from the public.
Just, just to piggyback on, on your comments and maybe, uh, on Mr. Galley's as well. Um, if, if there's insufficient parking for the restaurant, which would, which would, um, make the restaurant attendees suffer and, and the cashier director of the restaurant suffer, that's one thing. Uh, but if it's, if the deficiency that the restaurant is creating affects the office space. I'm not so much in favor of that at all. I mean, maybe we'll learn more about it in the parking study, you know. But if, if they can't provide enough parking for their own patrons, it will hurt the restaurant. Because there'll be no place to park, they won't go in, they won't eat, they won't get any money. But if you're taking money away from the doctor's offices, and I don't know if you would or not, that's, we're going to find out. That is, that is not good. That is not good. That's the only comments I have on that thought.
Comments from the public? And if you have them again, please raise your hand, we'll recognize you and cite your name. Are you the applicant?
No.
No?
You want to formally open?
Yeah, I will open the public hearing. Yes, please.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, planning commission, thank you. My name is Matt Farrell with Team Core. We are the new owners and operators of the center, uh, purchased this past year. Um, balancing medical office, retail, restaurant, mixed use is a interesting dynamic day in and day out. Times of use, traffic, so on and so forth. I'm a Clarkson resident, been here since two thousand and five. Drove by the center for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years. Hasn't really changed much, other than three different brands in the restaurant. Mesquite Creek was the longest standing. Diamo hit at a time when probably the white tablecloth and price points weren't quite right. Economy hit with the pandemic and Fifth Tavern stepped in. We just met the applicant and the tenant in the past year through the acquisition of the property. Um, very happy with them as a tenant. This, there's no economic benefit to the property ownership in this. This is a desire by the tenant, which we welcome and support. Because they feel their patrons at certain times of the year prefer to have a little bit more setting in that bar area versus the dining area. And the flow of the traffic to the, to the restaurant on the inside kind of shifts left to right depending on the time of the year. Um, the outside seating, albeit limited here in Michigan, when it is a nice day, there are good, there are good benefit of that in, in the outside. Um, so I'm, on behalf of the ownership group of the property, we're in support of their intentions. Um, to the commissioner who asked about who's going to police the situation. Uh, granted the municipality, uh, and their support of doing that. But I as landlord and the property management company also have to manage and police that. Because we have to balance the, the happiness of the rest of the tenants and also the lease obligations of all the rest of the tenants. Um, we have got long, longstanding medical users there, uh, that we want to keep very, very happy for many more years to come. Uh, we've experienced two minor vacancies since we acquired. Uh, those vacancies were accounted for in the, in the updated study, um, with what we feel is appropriate for the medical, medical use of that space. Um, so it's really, in our opinion, it's a timing of day and flow. And as long as the, uh, applicant manages a healthy construction schedule. And to, does it in a quality, manner ship way, we're in support of the intentions that they have. I think it's going to increase the, the overall look and appearance of the center without putting any new foundation, new brick and mortar, or new square footage. Into the actual site, because the site is pretty well overbuilt from that standpoint, so. Happy to answer any questions from the ownership if, if, if desired.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the audience want to comment yet? Are you, again, you're, you're speaking as a citizen?
I did the parking lot counts and.
I asked you to wait till after we, after the public hearing. This is for our, our residents of the township to comment. Anybody else? Nobody still online?
One person.
If they want to say anything? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Okay, would you like to explain your parking study to us? And please tell us who you are.
I'm Joshua Scherzer. Uh, I work with NCS team, we did all the planning and the parking lot counts. Um, I know you were asking about where we came up with the numbers, that's right from the city ordinances. So all the numbers that are in the chart is if everybody was at max occupancy all at once. Which, I mean, it can happen, it's very unlikely that every single medical office, the restaurant, everybody would be at max occupancy all at the same time. Can it happen? Absolutely. Chances of it happening are probably pretty slim to none. Um, so all those numbers came from, based on the exam rooms, square footage of lobbies in the, in the medical spaces. And number of seats, um, in the restaurant, based on the ordinance by the city.
So you, nobody sat there and actually counted, uh, average basis, the number of cars that were parked there? This is.
No, this is set for.
Okay.
Full occupancy at every hour of the day. Like what the numbers would be at.
So like on the, um, I assume what would be the second page at the bottom where it says total parking required by the hour.
Mm-hmm.
I think the highest number I see is two hundred and fifty-seven.
Correct.
So you're saying that the medical o, office, and that includes a couple of facilities that aren't really medical office, but.
Yeah, I believe there's a salon and a dry cleaners. Yes.
Total, most likely, the total parking demands, if they, all of them were being fully occupied would be two hundred and fifty-seven.
Correct.
Then you add in the restaurant.
That is including the restaurant.
Uh, which suite is?
The restaurant is seven two two eight. So it's, it's right above the numbers for the exams.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any questions from the commission?
That's parking spots, not individuals in the.
Correct, that's the number of parking spots required for each suite.
Anybody else got any questions for him?
Just so I can, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just so I can understand. If two hundred and fifty-seven is the most that's ever needed and total parking is available is three hundred and one, then there's no deficiency ever, is that right?
That's correct.
No, that doesn't exactly comport with some other comments. From Carlisle's from about deficiencies. But there's no, nothing specific in terms of this hour, that hour, this, so is yours contradicting?
Is this before the, the addition and the extra seating or?
No, this is including everything. Yep.
But I would add that it, in, it's basing the restaurant on what I consider to be understated seating arrangements. And keep in mind that two banquet rooms are not taken into account at all in, in that. And keep in mind that two banquet rooms are not taken into account at all in in that demand, the requirement for the restaurant. You have any comment on that? Well, the plans, I believe, show two rooms on the, what would that be, I don't wanna get turned around, back corner of the building.
North northeast side.
Brian, can you bring up the floor plan? One more time.
I called the one room, the service room.
Maybe the last page. It's a little slop.
Or you can go to the site that you want.
This whole block is lunch. Six, six, enter.
Right here. So this is a storage room here, this is the banquet room here, and those are forty people. So if you got to your max, would be that one time event on a Saturday. That's Saturday, got this one. And that's all kitchens fixed there.
Yeah, it didn't include the banquet in the numbers because I was told that that banquet hall is only used on Friday and Saturday nights.
I was told it uses three to four times a week.
Okay.
Still, it looks like we have forty-four additional spaces, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so if that holds forty, we still.
One or twice a week.
Can you? I could not, on that site plan, I counted what appeared to be all the parking spaces I could, and I think I got them all, I only got two hundred and sixty-seven. Do you, anybody else try that extra?
Well, you did the parking study, are you saying there's three hundred and one?
Yeah, three hundred and one to all spaces. Cause also on the parking counts on these sheets, it includes the staff, so that includes those doctor spaces underneath, that would be yours.
I counted those.
Yeah, should add up to three hundred and one, there's bubbles with numbers in them for all the parking numbers.
Other questions, um, from the commission?
Could I, yes, can I ask Megan a question?
Yeah.
She's she's busy unearthing some data.
Of course.
Yeah, the, uh, this document from Richard, which you have probably.
Yes.
Okay, and it says, our previous review concluded that there is no evidence of adequate parking on the site and the applicant needed to provide a detailed parking study prepared by a qualified professional. That was dated September twenty-fourth, just a few weeks ago. Is this, are you the person?
Yes.
That the, that did this study after the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Okay. The study would need to consider per, you know, current parking needs of all users. The applicant's architect provided the parking analysis, now I guess that's yours.
Mm-hmm.
Which verified that during hours of peak demand, there would be a parking deficiency. Now, that is just not what I heard here, but that's what's in here, which is true. The archi- the applicant's architect provided a parking analysis which verified that during hours of peak demand there would be a parking deficiency. Furthermore, the study relied on the assumption that all business hours would remain the same, I guess forever. Um, so.
I can clarify.
Okay, good.
Um, this letter was written based on a parking study that was then revised and resenten. So I retract what I said earlier, and I can see why you were confused. The parking study that I and Mr. Paul originally looked at, um, was this these red marks on the bottom, um, which are not on the one that was in your packet that was revised by the applicant. And one thing I will say, um, in terms of looking at parking, is when you have, um, shared parking amongst different users, um, you can take into account when they would cross over, or maybe if there is crossover, that someone goes to the doctor and then goes to lunch. So, and I apologize for that not being clear.
Is is this what you see in a typical parking study? Or does somebody actually take the time to count?
In a typical parking study, somebody takes the time to count.
Okay. I'm sorry, Joe, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, no, I forgot what I was gonna say. Pass.
So bottom line, we really have three hundred and one spaces, is that correct? That's correct.
But that's not as important as how many do we need. But are are you satisfied?
Well, they're saying two fifty-seven.
I know, I, so is Megan, would would you revise your required need to two fifty-seven? I'm just making that up, you know, which is underneath three hundred and one, which says there is no deficiency, you're not gonna say that?
I wouldn't say that, um, A, like, will depend on the studies that they provided. So if that study says that when they all add up, it's, that's what the required amount of spaces are, that's what the required amount of spaces are when the these, when these different facilities are open. The thing that, um, and in this one, they do, the revision probably, they do have the two empty storefronts accounted for as well. Um, from our perspective, what's most important is it doesn't meet the ordinance. And then if it doesn't meet the ordinance, if you can waive it, which you could under a minor PUD amendment, you have to have a good reason to look at that. Could be crossover of vehicles, could be based on observations in the field. The main thing that you're looking for is that parking, there's not a parking overflow that then starts to go off-site um, and starts to affect neighborhoods that are around, um, and Main Street is obviously a very busy road. Um, and so to back up and affect traffic.
Okay, anybody else? Um, I'd like to get off parking for a minute. Um, I'm concerned that you've got some good sized planter boxes, I think, I think it's one or two of them are staying, another one is being removed. Um, one of the ones that are staying has got some pretty nice planting in in it, a lovely tree. We do have landscaping requirements. Um, there's, I I I don't see any indication in these plans of what kind of new plantings will be put in those boxes. And I think, I think that needs to be specified. Cause I, I I don't think this meets our landscaping requirements, but I don't, because it's a minor modification and I don't know that it needs to, but if you're gonna replace some landscaping, I'd like to know what it is. I hate to see that nice tree out in the front come out. Did the applicant, uh, the owner of the property here wanna say anything else?
No, I don't have anything.
Please, no, no, nothing, okay.
Um, not speaking as the applicant, but as the property owner and landlord for the site, um, I believe there is a planter being moved. Uh, there is an overgrown weed in the center of that, which was an unused fountain that has been shut down and dormant for a number of years. Uh, so there was a weed removed recently to clean up what is a sh- a shaggy bush. Other than that, the plantings, uh, remain unchanged throughout the entire site at the present time. We have made a very strong conscious effort of trimming and pruning and cleaning up because some of the stuff was getting way overgrown. Um, but as you see it today and drive by it, is to our satisfaction as the property owner. Um, if there are planters moved, we also support and endorse, uh, replacing with planters. I think that's part of the ambiance of the site, the ambiance of that patio. Um, one more comment about parking, uh, the only day of the year that I'm concerned as a property owner about parking is Mother's Day brunch. So if you've ever been to the restaurant for Mother's Day brunch, it is a big deal, and it's a big deal for the community. Um, it's on a Sunday, and so most of the other tenants are unaffected. Um, and speaking to neighbor areas to park, because the site is built out, um, we're Main Street on the on the west, I seventy-five on the north, the side street with, in theory, you could park there, but fundamentally, people have never parked there and we've never seen, at least in my experience of eighteen years in the community, but as an owner since last October, we have not seen cars trickle even close to beyond the medical building during peak times of the restaurant. So if you look at that illustration up top, the medical building is that dark line up and down where the hallway is. To the right of that, I've never seen patrons of the restaurant ever trickle that that side. So there's a rear parking lot on the southeast corner, the underparking underneath the cantilever medical, and all the parking to the south um, has never, to my knowledge, been utilized by restaurant patrons, um, any day of the week, seven days a week. So the concentration, most people try to get the front spaces up towards the road, and if they don't see those spaces, they wrap around the back corner of the back lot, which is really designed for the restaurant. I agree with Chair and a few other comments that there's well over fifty spaces available almost all the time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I did, I have a, just a question, I may not really relate. As the landowner, you're
Yep.
rather than a business owner.
Yes.
Are you responsible for the landscaping or are the tenants responsible?
We're responsible for the overall site, um, they are responsible for their area of leased space. So that would include the planters on the patio and things of that nature, that is theirs, um, but we oversee the overall site. So everything outside of their footprint.
You mean?
The the islands and the perimeter of the parking is maintained by the property owner.
I guess piggybacking off that conversation, just this question's for you, Brian. I I mean, I agree with the property owner and the chair that, you know, yeah, making those planter boxes look nice enhances the restaurant experience, but those planter boxes were added, they're not part of the site landscape.
No.
They're just, I I agree that it should be part of the patio, it's part of the experience, but it's not part of the overall landscape plan. And and wouldn't be.
No, they wouldn't because they're portable.
Yes, okay.
That part of the green space required.
There's a couple of permanent ones there.
That's what I'm talking about, the permanent ones.
Yeah, I mean, those certainly, you can certainly bring that up as, you know, an item.
As many of the planter boxes to enhance the patio area, you know?
Yeah.
I I I'm on board with that, it's just more of a procedure question.
Yeah, I, one, one thing that I don't think is the applicant's, the petitioner's answered is the fact that out there right now, they have twenty-seven, how many tables are out there?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, and the plan does not indicate that they still have enough park with twenty-one. I know it, you can, there's qualitative data to say, well, I've never had a trouble getting a parking spot, that's true, but, you know, um, what they're representing on a site plan is not indicate, is not, not indicative of what's really there. They basically shrunk the park, you know, the number of seats to accommodate the parking study.
Well, if max is two fifty-seven in their study and yours, how deficient are we? How, what was the number you just threw out?
How many bill was?
Tables or?
Yeah, tables outdoor.
Twenty-one compared to, I think it's eight.
Okay.
So if it's a four top, you know, it's another forty seats, you take two sixty and add forty, you're at three hundred. So it still matches.
Brian, I'm having a hard time pulling up the plans on my computer here. Can you pull up the one that chose the planter boxes? I'm I'm pretty sure it said once.
Says new plantings, what, you know, it points to the planter box, it says new plantings on it, so.
That's what I thought.
So, I mean.
Yeah, what we noticed was those plants are a little overgrown and a little bit big for the size of the planter. So we thought it'd be better to make them nicer, more to scales, I didn't feel like you're gonna be giant plants when you're sitting here and stuff. So I I just felt like it was too big, and it would be nicer to make them a little smaller, that's that's what I wanted.
Well, it's.
The planters are nice, it's just the landing is so tall.
I agree, they're nice. But I'd like to know what you, what you're gonna put in them.
Similar planting, just so, just not so big.
Because this is my opinion, it needs to be specified on the plant.
We can.
Anybody else?
I guess we're gonna talk about the building part itself?
Yeah.
Like the, I guess I'd like to understand the nano wall and then, oh, if, are the interior walls gonna stay there or are those, you know, somewhat removable or not, so?
Wanted me to like to address that?
The nano walls?
Yeah.
They're, they're movable partitions, so they open up, um.
Are they like garage doors or do they slide or what?
No, they go, they, they separate away into the sides of the walls. I think I show a pic, there it is, I showed a picture of it, how they're separated off to the side. So they open up to here, open up to here, open up to here, open up to here.
So, but the interior walls that are there now?
There's a half wall here, so people can sit up.
No, I'm talking about farther in, the the current wall, is that, is a, the current wall's gonna stay or are they gonna be?
Oh, yeah, while it just drops.
So those nano walls, are they like accordion?
Uh, they slide on a, on a rail up high, and they're, they're downloaded, so you basically just slide and walk right on the top of the wall. I don't know if you've ever been to other restaurants where they open up similar concept, yeah, they're really nice. So picture this closed and then it just slide open and sit out of the way, so you can enjoy the outside. And they have a half wall holding.
But that's under the overhead, which is.
The one where you go out, this does not have a half wall, this is where you can go outside.
Mr. Ritchie's question, the structural interior walls will remain, though I assume they will, cause they're holding up the building.
The, yes, yes, the, the, yes.
And the glass will remain in them too?
In the, okay, so
In the current outside.
The current outside, no, this is being removed.
The whole wall is?
The columns that are here now are being reduced, with the half walls built out on either side to receive the nano walls that will slide. And then on the picture of the elevation.
So the current interior walls will be removed, so your, so the interior part of the bar
From the bar area to the outside.
Will be larger permanently, so.
Yeah, so then, cause it's kinda crowded in the bar now, they can spell out the tent.
I just wanna make sure, I didn't know if the nano walls were like Four Seasons where, you know, maybe in the wintertime, it it would be too cool to to go out there.
When they're shot, when they're shot, then, yeah.
Okay, so the intent is the interior walls will be opened up, so, so basically the inside of the bar will be larger.
If it's a, it's a little crowded in there too, so they wanna spread it out a little bit for the wintertime.
Just just to be clear, the transition from the in, existing interior to the new section will be smooth?
Yeah.
You don't know that anything was there before, other than maybe some support beams or something. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, just on the plans, it doesn't say remove, you know, normally it'll say remove existing wall or whatever.
Can you?
Says demo windows and doors.
Can you make that a little clearer on the plans? That your, those walls will be removed?
Yeah, I believe.
Basically, it just says demo windows and doors, it doesn't, doesn't, you know, make it sound like it's all open, so.
Okay. Yeah, so it's a, it's a window that goes all the way to the ground now.
Okay.
It's glass and glazing.
Classic glazing, so when I say window and door, it's floor to ceiling.
Okay.
There's no wall.
So the plan still shows it, right, is that what you're saying?
Well, basically, it just says demo windows and doors, so I mean, I guess I didn't know if there was any wall area there that was staying.
They have the columns.
Yeah, the column with the header above it.
Okay.
I just was trying to make sure that, I guess, I was envisioning the whole area being open, so.
I guess it's, uh, subject to some of the things like the planning and the walls being clarified and I think this probably makes sense in the, in the parking being clarified. But I think, in my opinion, because we granted a few expansions without any additional parking, I think we need to substantiate the rationale for not requiring additional parking and. the rationale for not requiring additional parking, and I'd like to see a, the plan resubmitted with accurate seating and, um, including the banquet area and stuff like that, and, and an updated parking study, so that we have accurate decision on which to, information on which to base our decision. That's my thoughts.
When we've done these in the past, Mr. Otman, we've kinda segmented the motion into two things, right? Because if it's not a minor amendment, you really can't continue, correct?
Well, first, the planning commission has to determine that it's a minor amendment.
Yeah.
Then you go forward.
You could make a motion that it's a minor amendment, make a totally separate motion to postpone, approve, deny, whatever, with X conditions.
Correct. Then I don't have to post it again.
Correct.
And notice it.
Now, we could make the, uh, any changes to the site plan, or it could be administrative too, if that's clear enough to everybody. I mean, if that fits everybody. I guess, to me, Brian, or somebody, let's just, let's talk about the amendment to the PUD, if it's minor or major.
Yeah, right. I think it's mi- I, I think it's minor.
Well, like I said, let's, why don't we make a motion and vote on that and get that out of the way?
Anybody disagree with the minor?
I wouldn't disagree, but I've never, you know, voted on minor or major amendments before. Is there any criteria, or is it just left up to you, how you feel?
No, I mean, there's criteria in the ordinance, but this is just like Door Credit Union that was treated as a minor PUD. We didn't have a formal motion, but when it's simple modifications like this, it's certainly a minor amendment. There's no change of use or anything like that that would trigger a major amendment.
Okay. Well, those are conditions. I mean, that's, that's good.
Yeah, and there's no, a little change in square footage, I guess you could argue, but.
Yeah, that's, that's not necessarily a criteria.
Footprint of the U C.
Oh, excuse me. Let's bring the motion, just get that out of the way.
All right, I'll make a motion in PC file two zero two four dash zero zero nine, petitioner Fifth Tavern at seven two two eight North Main Street, that the, uh, proposed improvements to the building will be considered a minor amendment to the existing PUD.
Next second.
I'm in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We didn't need a roll call, do we? Brian, we, okay. I guess, I'm in favor on, um, moving forward with the, uh, with these changes. And like I say, I think if we clarify what we want on the update before any work starts, as far as clarifying parking or whatever, I think it could be done administratively. Mr. Chair, if you feel that way, if not, we can clarify what we want to have it come back, so.
Are, are you gonna, are you gonna require amended plans to show correct seating and, and to be reviewed administratively?
Yeah.
But, well, that's, I guess, if we do it administratively, that's what it is. But I'm just saying that, to me, well, we should, we should just state the max number of tables or whatever, and, and do that.
Well, and-
To me, the max number of tables could be depicted based on the max number of parking spots, and if they clarify the parking, or?
Well, and, and the benefit is, like I said earlier, if they, if they put, if we approve it with the seating arrangements they've specified and they exceed it, we have some recourse. If they show the twenty-one tables outside, we have no recourse. So, yeah.
But I guess, I, what I'm saying is that if we're saying, if he does another parking study, and, and all the parameters are taken in effect that we want, then the max number of tables will be predicated on that, right?
I would only say that, uh, we would restrict the, the use to a certain amount of tables outside, but what if the, what if the tenant wanted to just close some of the inside tables and move them to the outside seating? Like, I know that's slippery, but it's more flexible for the owners. If in the summer, they get twenty people inside and a hundred people outside, they could just close the whole inside and have a hundred twenty outside. Like, quite a week here.
Right, right, yeah. Megan?
Mr. Chair, I would just say that if they're not meeting the required parking and you're gonna waive part of it, that should be something that comes back, or that you make the decision based on, upon the information that you have tonight. If you're making a decision that they have to meet the required park, the, whatever amount of tables that they have has to meet the, the maximum, the, I'll add up to three hundred and one, if that's something that could be handled administratively.
Say that one more.
So you have two choices. One is if you're looking to waive, waive parking spaces, you feel like they're gonna go over the three hundred and one that's required. Whatever the requirements of the zoning ordinance is gonna be over three hundred and one, then they need to come back to the planning commission for a waiver based on a parking study that's more robust than what they submitted. If they stay below the, meet or stay below the three hundred and one with the required parking with the amount of tables that they have, then that's something that could be approved administratively.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So you're, you're essentially saying sufficient information to be reviewed administratively to substantiate no more than three hundred and one parking spaces?
Would be required, yeah. And that could give the administrator discretion then to have that decision come back to you if feels that it doesn't, doesn't meet.
Or if the petitioner doesn't agree with, with that, same difference.
Helen, are there any, uh, issues in your letter that, um, you feel need to be addressed? I, just for-
The only thing I would say is when they do recent plans, they should be stamped and sealed by a professional, like the architect or whoever has designed them, and, and the engineer. Um, the only other issue we thought was just, um, making sure everything's ADA compliant. But the place, I mean, those walkway areas already assume and presumably are, you know, ADA compliant, so that does seem like that would be a big issue.
So we should reference your comments one and two?
Um, I guess it'd be comment one. And, and comment seven.
Seven.
Just that it should be eighty, it should meet ADA standards.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I got a question if we were jumping over two to three. The outdoor seating expansion appears to be partially overcome in walkways for development. The applicant should be responsible for obtaining all necessary permissions. Has that been done, or is that, I'm not sure I understand all of that, but somebody does.
I don't think, I think that, uh, that would be related to the owner possibly, so I don't know if that's an issue anymore.
Yeah, it's probably-
It seems like they have plenty of permission.
Okay.
And I, personally, I don't see, based on the plan submitted that's up there, how it interferes in the common walkway. The, uh, under the current arrangement, actual arrangement, there are some tables on that south side that do encroach into the walkway that goes between the two buildings. But this doesn't reflect that, in my opinion. I don't see it as an issue. All right, I get, I'd, I'd be willing to entertain a motion. Anybody opposed your concept?
Before, yeah, you're the one who came up with it. Uh, okay, I guess I'll, I'll try it here. Um, make a motion in PC file two zero two four dash zero zero nine, petitioner Fifth Tavern, located at seven two two eight North Main Street, um, requesting consideration of plan unit development amendment in order to make building modifications. I, I recommend that we, um, approve their, um, request for amendment stating the following conditions. The prints be stamped and sealed by the architect or, and designer. Um, that all table seats meet the parking calculations, and that study be provided to staff so staff can review it at the time the final prints are submitted. Uh, all modifications meet ADA standard. The landscaping improvements in the planner boxes, um, I don't, I'm not quite sure how I should word this. Chair, you wanna help me?
Just defined in the plan?
Uh, yeah, landscape improvements, um, in the planner boxes defined in the plan. And that, uh, try and maintain the current amount of planning, plannings that are already there. Um, anything else?
You want the removal of the current outside walls?
Yeah, um, just, uh, on the, the amended plans, also more clearly define the, uh, removal and, and demo of the, um, existing walls within the, within the restaurant.
It was just better notation of, uh, the intent that the whole inside is to be open, I guess, to, to the new area, so.
Adding what Commissioner Ritchie said along with the demo comment to, to more clearly define the space on the final print. I'll support.
Discussion?
Sure.
Brian, can we, um, what, since this will not be coming back, I assume, right? Okay, can we be provided with the information specifically on seating and parking spaces?
Yeah.
How it's been defined, when you define it, from the information you're gonna get?
Yeah, we'll have Carlisle Warman provide that, a memo to that effect.
Yeah, we, we look at all of the-
That's how they, that's how I get the information, so.
Okay.
We review all the construction plans, so, based on your motion to, based on what, how they were approved. So, Mr. Otman could definitely provide you a copy of that memo when it happens.
Okay, good, because we don't normally get that.
No, because it's after your authority here as planning commission. That's what the staff does on the back end.
But if we make them a condition and we don't even know that they've been met, why is that beyond our authority?
Because if I don't ensure the conditions are met, then I'm not doing my job, so.
Okay, so we're look, making sure you're doing your job, if we get this information and verify it.
Part of the request that you notify us what your decision was, so.
Yeah.
That's what you're really asking, so.
Right, and the data behind it. Not, not all the data of what's being submitted, but especially the parking versus seating, because that was an issue here, and it remains kind of-
That's what Fuzz Forward, Brian said he would provide that, and Carlisle Warman said they would provide that to Brian's.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's what we do. Uh, both consultants will review the amended plans.
Okay.
You ready for a vote? One day you take a role?
Yeah. Bill Scarborough?
Yes.
Joe Suter?
Aye.
Mike DeBilling, yes. Brian Galley?
Yes.
Jason Borsheim?
Yes.
Rod Ritchie?
Yes.
Tom Till.
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations. When's it gonna be done, so we can tell this?
You're not really working on it.
All right. So we got you on tape now that you started before your approval. Double edged sword.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is another public hearing, PC file two oh two four dash zero one three. Dan and Andrea Nyberg, I hope I said it right. Uh, requesting a special land use, amended final site plan approval for a new community center located in a formerly used church building. Megan, you wanna say anything about this, or you wanna?
Sure. Um, the applicant's requesting a special land use approval to convert a vacant church into a community center. Um, the property's located on the south side of Sunnyside Drive, west of Pine Knob Lane. It's approximately a little over an acre, and the existing building footprint is forty-five hundred square feet. Um, they had previously applied for a special land use and were before you at a different location, and that application was pulled that night. Um, we've mentioned in the review the intent of the R one A zoning district. Is that something that you should look at as part of your decision? And you really have two decisions before you tonight. If you look in the listing of what allowed uses there are in R one A, um, non-commercial recreation uses such as parks, playgrounds, athletic fields, and community centers are listed. Um, but a nonprofit organization like this that's serving youth, um, isn't necessarily fall into that box explicitly, maybe implicitly. And so, um, because there's no, um, there are no quite definition, one of the decisions you have to make tonight is to determine if that request meets the intent of the ordinance. So if you find the non, that the applicant's proposing a non-commercial community center, that you have the discretion to approve or, or disapprove the request based on standards for special approval. So first, you have to find that you think this use is appropriate in this zoning district as a special land use because it's analogous to this non-recreation, it's analogous to the non-recreation uses, parks, playgrounds, athletic fields, and community centers. So that's one. Then, let's say you do decide that. You need to look at it in terms of, does it meet the special land use and site plan considerations? In terms of site plan, they're not proposing any changes to the building or layout. This is much more well arranged than the previous site that they had in terms of access, in terms of size of parking lot, circulation. They have adequate parking. Um, we had some quibbles about the width of the, um, ADA parking, um, lengths, but I think those can be taken care of. They have trash, they have lighting, um, they would need a variance to utilize the existing ground sign in this current location. The wall signs proposed to be removed. They've asked about another sign at the soccer field, and that would be handled under a separate permit. One of the issues really tonight is that no landscaping was proposed in the site plan that you looked at. Um, I understand the plan, the applicant's emailed, um, some additional things that they would like to submit for tonight. We haven't had a chance to evaluate them. Um, but uh, we are assuming that all the vegetation and trees on the site are proposed to be preserved, but feel that those need to be augmented in order to have proper screening between this and the residential uses on the sides in the rear. When you look at the special land use considerations, um, which is one of the things, if you make the first decision, then that's the second decision, um, to look at whether it's, um, compatible, whether it would be, um, not be incompatible or inharmonious um, with the ordinance or the master plan. Um, if you would look at that, um, so the R one A district is a residential district, and, but it does allow for non-residential uses like places of worship and like parks, um, and recreation centers. But this would be, community center would be a focus of activity, and it would have a more time and activity. It would be active at times at a place of worship, which was the old use, necessarily wouldn't. So, because they're looking to operate five to six, you know, for a certain amount of time. Um, and also, um, in the afternoons and perhaps more during the summer. Also, the, the proposed, one of your standards is the proposed use should not make vehicular or pedestrian traffic no more hazardous than it's normal for the district involved. I don't know how many of you did the, did a site visit, but it's a fairly residential area that it's in. It's not a major street that carries a lot of traffic, um, and that's the main way that, um, people would be getting there. And it's right now that it's generating little evening traffic. And when places of worship exist elsewhere in the township, they're usually on major thoroughfares. Another standard is the proposed land use should not unreasonably impact the surrounding, surrounding property in terms of operation and aesthetics. Again, because of this is operating at different times, there might be noise, light, and traffic. We think that those can be, um, dealt with in some way with landscaping and screening, but we hadn't been given a lot of details. Also, um, one of the things to look at in terms of your standards is whether the location, height of buildings or structures, the nature and height of walls, fences, landscaping would not interfere with or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent lands or unreasonably affect their value. Again, we've talked about that wall, fences, landscaping would be appropriate around the rear and the side and, in order for, have a proper buffer. Um, another thing to look at maybe is hours of operation, and also how, when people would be outside doing activities. Again, there's a lot of these standards that tend to repeat, but looking at if it's harmonious with physical, historic, economic aspects. The proposed site's not necessarily gonna provide service to people, residents, new residents from my, but people throughout the community. Um, the master plan also, whether to look at whether this is in agreement with the master plan designation. This is designated for a single-family residential area, but again, these type of uses are things that you find in neighborhoods. Um, so really, you do have some discretion there. Looking to see whether it's designed, located, and planned to be operated in terms of public health, safety, and welfare. Because it's in the residential area, and there could be some negative impact- Because it's in the residential area, and there could be some negative impacts, is there some things to think about about whether just the use itself is inappropriate, or whether there's things that could be done to help to minimize any impacts. Again, one of the things is impairment, pollution, destruction of air, water, natural resources. We don't think there would be any negative environmental impact. Whether it would unreasonably burn the capacity of public services, we don't anticipate any of that, but would defer to the city, the township engineer. In general, the township's attempted to place high priority on protection of residential neighborhoods, and your decision is really whether this would be an asset, a detriment, or a neutral impact onto the neighborhood in terms of how it's proposed. Some things to keep in mind is the site's on a paved residential street, located one block south of Main B Road. It's surrounded on all four sides by a single-family residential uses. There are a few site plan issues that we've noted, but also noted that there likely would be some nuisance aspects associated with a use of this nature, and then how those could be mitigated in terms of landscaping, performance standards, limitations on hours of operations.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the commission? I would have a few comments, then I would ask, for the benefit of the audience, ask the applicant to kinda explain their operation so that the audience gets an understanding of it, and then I'll open it up to public comment. Any other commission members?
I guess one comment is why don't we have a review by Norwood and France? I guess one of my things when I look at this aerial view, the whole site is pretty much paved. So how do we know about water runoff and everything else affecting the neighbors? We're talking about landscape screen for noise or light and different things. Why, why aren't we reviewing this for, I guess, water runoff conditions and everything as well?
Well, on these type of sites that are already existing, we typically don't have our engineer look at it because they're not proposing any, you know, improvements or additions to impervious surface. So, I mean, because if, if a site is looked at as existing and you trigger the new stormwater standards on it, that puts a significant burden on a petitioner, so.
Okay, well, I guess let's go back then to, I guess, this was done before any of my time on the planning commission, so how do we know the parking lot was ever put in to the standard in the first place?
I think it predates our ordinance entirely.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I'd say-
We'll have, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that the building is vacant right now, right? I think.
It's an active church.
It's an active church?
Yes. Okay.
Is it gonna stay active? And, and before you answer it, please state your name and address.
Sure. Sorry, Dan and my wife Andrea Knepper, 6682 Spring Crest Court, technically in Springfield Township. And I do have, as Megan mentioned, we emailed out like a, 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 a tandem to the attachment, to the application. I had a copy. We got the feedback, we, uh, like movement, and come to the dress each of the points. Thank you.
Yeah, to, to address the, the issues, I guess number one, the, what defines a non-commercial community center? We've attempted to look through the ordinances. There is no definition for independent township. We've looked at all four of the bordering townships. I believe two of them had them, and not only do we meet those, but we meet like the complete superset of all those criteria. So we did successfully earn nonprofit status a couple of weeks ago with the state of Michigan. We're working to be the 501(c)(3), not a tax exempt status, but we are now a nonprofit. Kind of, I think, explaining the, what we do. Do you wanna take that from?
Yeah, so when you look at community center, like you might think of a lot of things, but this is a teen community center, and that basically is what we are. We don't fit a definition of a lot of things, and there isn't in Clarkston a space for teens to go. And so we opened, I'm a social worker, and I wanted to provide a space that kids could come, be themselves, have a safe space to talk, and right now it's set up as an art studio, so they learn new hobbies and coping skills and all sorts of things. And, and in the two year, almost two years we've been open, we, we border a spa, so, I mean, the noise, we've never had any complaints. And, yeah, I mean, things are going well, and the kids are seeing improvements and families are, and so we need a bigger space.
Can you talk about, like, how many you serve, kinda activities you do, hours of operation?
Yeah, so it really varies because it's drop-in, so the kids don't necessarily sign up. They come when they wanna come. So it could be, like, one day I could have fifteen, and the next day I might have two. It just depends, like, back to school time or the end of the school year. And it, it really just, it depends. Right now, we are Monday through Thursday, three to eight. And generally, like, we were open in the beginning, longer, but parents don't like to be picking up kids late at night. So there's just a couple times that we'll do maybe a late night event or something like that. But, and then the other thing about outdoor activities is at this point, we don't have organized outdoor activities. We might randomly, it's raining, and we go out and do like a quick art project or something, or it's nice summer weather, and we're, you know, doing sidewalk chalk or something, so it really is like these spontaneous outdoor, outdoor things.
No weekend hours?
Um, there are special events, so sometimes, yes. And usually not on a Sunday.
Do you have any idea of how big you'd like this to grow? I mean, if you got thirty teens at it, at a time, would that be too much for you, or would you love that?
Yeah, um, no, it would be too much for me right now, so I think because this is a new concept, and it has to be trusted adults that are kind of leading this, and not everyone is a person who's qualified to be that, that person. But it is going to be a gearing up to more students as we have, you know, more trusted people that, that could be joining me in, in providing this space for them. So it would be over time that we would see growth in numbers.
Questions for the applicant, Belinda?
I would just like to know, I don't know if I can even ask this question, but how, I was reading your website. It looks like the teens don't pay very much to come there, so are you funded privately or publicly?
We're currently funded privately. We have been doing this ourselves, and yes, we have a low cost for service, so, yeah. And on a day where it's like eighth grade and up, they can come for five hours for ten dollars, and they get their snacks and supplies and all of that. But now that we're nonprofit status, we will be eligible for grants, and so I'm hoping that will offset our costs.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, the, the thing that stood out to me, that I would think that it would impact the neighborhood so much, seems to be addressed here in the updated plans with the, with the trees and the screening.
Okay, yeah, from my perspective, that was something, I guess, we kinda wanna discuss, because I really think a six-foot solid wall around the parking lot is gonna be a detriment to an otherwise peaceful neighborhood. We're open to it if that's really what's required, but if the neighbors just don't want that, I would like to at least have that discussion. The landscape or the greening, I guess, is no problem at all.
Mr. Chair, in this updated set, he's proposing arborvitaries. I wouldn't suggest that, because when you salt the parking lot and you foul it, it's gonna kill the arborvitaries. So, I mean, you may wanna consider some sort of screening that's alternative. And it's up to the commission whether it's a fence or some kind of vegetative screening.
Yeah, I think the requirement from the, the ordinance is some sort of green screening, landscape screening, and then optionally a solid fence up to your discretion.
Did, did you say the church is vacating, or are they gonna continue?
They are, yeah, we're contracted to purchase it. They will be vacating.
And you're buying the building?
Correct.
Okay.
One of the things is basically teens don't like to come to events that are looked at as provided by a church, right? So they see that as a stigma. Whether it's valid or not, people can argue, but a lot of teens don't see that as a, they don't wanna go to youth group type activities.
Okay, there's no, no more questions from the commission for the applicant. I'll open the public hearing. Okay, I will open the public hearing. Again, I ask that you come, raise your hand, we'll identify you when you come to the podium.
Hello, Dan Auten. I live right across the road from there, and I see the kids wandering around that church at night, and they leave a light on. They've already trashed the empty church at the end of the road. They trashed a bus that, that used to be at that church, and all it's gonna be for, I was a teenager once, we were all young and foolish, and all they're gonna do is make a hangout place for it, because there'll be nobody around there to stop anything. I see them up and down the roads all night. You know, the empty the church that maybe rode by the schools, they've trashed it several times. And once they start going there, your idea is great, I'm not knocking that, except the mentality of the kids now, it's just to destroy. And once they have another place to hang out at with no supervision, that's just what it'll be.
I'm entitled to my opinion, right or wrong? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we ask a question?
Yes.
Sir?
Sir, I got a question for you.
Yes.
Yes, I had a question. Where, where are the kids that are causing the problems today hanging out or coming from, in your opinion?
Can you, can you go to the podium? So, the reason for that is-
I couldn't hear what these folks were saying, so now you wanna hear me? Okay. Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, you said that there's a lot of trashing of the neighborhood and whatever, hanging around and walking up and down the streets. Where are these kids coming from? Where's their base right now?
Their whole, the whole neighborhood. They trashed the cemetery. They broke all the markers in the cemetery a few years ago. They trashed that church.
Well, what makes you think what they wanna do?
It's another place for them to congregate at. Their idea behind this is great. I'm not condemning that at all. Except once they have a major place to congregate at, that's what it'll be at night.
Okay, so you?
Yeah, I, I would say personally, I'm not sure that I can make the jump where, why wouldn't they be there already? I mean, the church isn't gonna be at nighttime. So regardless of who's in the building, the, the kids are gonna do what the kids are gonna do, so I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that giving it a different tenant would change their behavior, or maybe it would if they locked it, locked up the fence.
Okay, what, what they wanna do is great. Gives the kids a place to go and do something constructive, okay? That's great, but once that closes up, that's still, that's still right where they're gonna funnel back to after dark. We're all young. You think back, that's what we did.
Well, if I understand it correctly, a lot of the teens that they serve, they're from all over the township, and they, the majority of them currently get there via their parents. They don't, she's not serving kids in your neighborhood.
So we haul the kids, it doesn't, it's, I guess I'm wrong then.
Yes, sir.
So my daughter actually attends.
Name, name and address.
Uh, six-two, name Chris Terry, six-two-five-four Graham Lane. My daughter actually attends there. She has since they've opened for over two years now. She's sixteen. Her and her friends go there after school. She gets caught up on homework. She does up to all types of art projects. It's been a great relief for her, and I've seen nothing but positivity from it. I actually lived at four-nine-seven-oh Sicily Anne, which is in that same neighborhood as well. So I, I don't know about how much kids and destruction, but, and I would say that kids, so we live there, and she used to go there, right? I mean, so it's gonna, it caters to everybody in the township, and I think any teen that would want to go. I would say too that I think that, we all know, like, these smaller churches, they're on their way out. They just can't sustain anymore. What is the, what are they gonna do with that building if not? What is the alternative? Because it is full of asphalt. It's not gonna be a very good residential use. Nobody's gonna buy it to live it there. The cost to turn that site into something else is just, I think it would just be too, too large, so I don't see what, what is a better alternative than helping the kids? And the fact that if they are there hanging out now, it's probably because they're only there on Sunday. They're gonna be there several days a week. These people own the building. They care about it. They're putting a hard into it. They're not making any money off of it. They're gonna direct those kids there to, you know, give them a relief. Instead of destroying things, they're gonna create things, so.
Okay.
That's all I gotta say about that.
Thank you. Yes, yes, sir.
Rusty O'Neil, I'm the pastor of the church that's, that they're gonna be buying. We've been there for eight years, and we have a youth group, and they're all football players from Waterford, Kettering High School, so there, there's multiple. We're there on Sunday mornings. My wife and I are there a few times during the, during the week. We've never had any issues, you know? I've talked to these guys. I've met them a few times, and what they're gonna do is like, I look at it as, as, you know, we're, we're trying to help people grow spiritually, grow, you know, understand peace and, and the love of God, and they're kinda trying to help these teens understand peace and loving each other. So it's, it's a great fit for that community. Right around the corner, there's the Eagles Club, which held several events during the week. Right across the street from us is a nursing home or a group home that helps the elderly and those who, who need help. So it's a great base community that involves a whole wide, different culture. So I just think it'd be a great fit, and we have to move because I have an elderly congregation, and we need a one-floor. This is two floors, and, you know, something a little bit more economical for them, so. But, yeah, I think it's a great move.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Lawrence Fidler, and I live right behind the church, and I came today just to see what you guys have. I was a Boy Scout leader, and I worked with the Boy Scouts at the American Legion on Mary Sue. And I know what it is to help youth and try and get them so we're not into trouble and stuff like that. And as far as the church, we haven't had any problems with the church. Like I said, I'm right behind them, so I, my property's adjacent to the parking lot. I mean, they don't hardly ever make any noise or anything, so I don't have a problem with, you know, them trying to help the community, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you had no problems with the church, and I can totally, you know, understand that.
Right.
Is there any other issues with the physical characteristics, floodlights, parking lots?
Uh, the only problem I ever had was, one year we got snow, and they pushed the snow into the fence and kinda messed my fence up. Other than that, I mean, there is a light. I mean, we go out and, you know, have a little bonfire at night, but it's just a, you know, a parking light. That's, other than that.
No issues.
No issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? One person online, would you like to say anything?
It's me, and one others. There's one other.
All right, no other comments. I'll close the public hearing. Comments from the commission? Belinda?
I have one question, will there be any kind of security on the building?
I believe there's currently, um, security cameras, I think we would look to include those and maybe reinforce those with more, uh, based on tonight, maybe including outside, yes.
You don't do any, I hate to be negative and talk about this, but you don't do any screening of the kids coming in or anything, they make sure nobody's armed, none of that?
No, we've had no problems, when I opened, I was concerned about just the, when you're inviting teens in, you have to, to worry more about other people who might prey on them. And so, um, I had talked to the police station about, you know, if I needed to have people doing a drive-by and things, but we've, not quite, we've had no issues, uh, things have been going smoothly, so.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for?
One, I guess to Brian and township, is there any, uh, like inspections or anything that need to be done to the building to change hands like that?
Yeah, change of occupancy permit through the building department's required and that also involves the fire marshal.
So there'll be like an inspection there to make sure there's nothing?
Yeah.
Can I address that? The fire marshal, they just came through and we have all new fire extinguishers who put up new, new exit signs, that's all been approved probably within the last six months.
Um, I, I should've added during the public comment, we do have two pieces of communication from Vincent Pepitone, uh, expressing, um, his opinion that he's not in favor of it. Wanted to read that in, anybody else?
I have a couple of quick things, um, for, for the township, uh, Brian, you mentioned herbividees have a bad track record. I, I kinda agree with the petitioner, something green is better than a, a hard fence in my opinion, I, I mean, I think the neighbors might like that better as well. I mean, in, in your township experience, what, do you know what a better plan is? I mean, because obviously they're not a big developer that's gonna have a formal landscape study.
Wait, can I offer something?
Yeah, so junipers are more hardy.
Well, we can, I, I, I don't know, but a landscape architect literally sits next to me.
Yeah.
At, at Carla Orman, so we could consult with them and then bring that information back.
Junipers kinda grow like an herbivide as well, they're, they're a cedar.
Yeah, I just don't know, the only plant that I know that likes salt are day lilies, which I don't think will, um, help us in what we're looking to achieve. But again, I know somebody who has that expertise and could literally get an answer back tomorrow.
Yeah, and I, I would just also make the comment that when they were said, there are some floodlights, I don't know if they're old fashioned bulb style or whatnot, I would just make the comment that any lighting meet the township standard to the proper Kelvin values and indirect to the neighboring properties.
Answer, uh, ask a question about that, so the lighting, uh, according to ordinance, basically, if you don't change it, there's no requirement to do so. And so I don't, just don't wanna open a can of worms by trying to impose or, you know, the thirty-five hundred Kelvin lighting and suddenly now it's a foot too high or whatever the other is, so can we?
Well, I, I guess I didn't, you know, if there's a floodlight on the top of the building, it's shining right into the neighbor's backyard.
Yeah.
I mean, I personally would take that down, but I, you know, I'm not a hundred percent familiar with the directional lighting there.
Yeah, there's one on a telephone pole along the, what's that, the east side, basically where the parking lot, or where the driveway ends and the parking lot, uh, begins. In the overhead, you can see like the, the shadow of that telephone pole, there's a yard light on that, the rest are on the building itself. Um, and then a question about the vegetation, because we just found out in the last couple of days that the septic field, we believe is on that east side between the parking lot and the fence. And so I'm not sure planting vegetation there is a fantastic idea.
Good thing.
Again, I'm no landscape architect, but.
Yeah, the roots will just grow into it, I mean, you can put a fence along the.
Is a fence by itself sufficient or then, I didn't know, like a berm and then vegetation or if that affects water flow, I don't wanna do that either, so, looking for recommendations, I guess.
Sell a fence?
Just sell a fence.
On that line, yeah, if you pile dirt on top of the septic, then it can't breathe properly either, I guess, you know?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Is there, is there one, yeah, uh, is there irrigation back there for plants, I don't think there's plants right now, any kind of evergreen's gonna be thirsty.
I don't believe there's any irrigation system in the place, no.
That's a good point.
I'm gonna do these for the kids.
I like your idea.
I mean, if we condition that he plants stuff and it doesn't make it, he has to replace it, you know, it has to, that's part of the approval.
That's true.
So he can decide.
Give a shot.
Hand water or put in a soaker hose, you know, I guess that would be his goal.
Yeah, I, I think, um, it would come close enough to the building on the west side, the irrigation starting there and going the rest of the way for soaks would be, um, ideal.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, thinking that, you know, there seems to be favorable response here, I'm getting the impression that maybe the commission's leaning towards an approval with some conditions and maybe wanna get a handle on those. So I would, you know, maybe these would be things that could be handled administratively, landscape plan, um, lighting. I guess I don't think it needs to meet ordinance, but maybe just verification that it's not obtrusive like, like Brian said, shining on some neighbors.
Yeah, so I was gonna say that the way the ordinance says, if you're gonna change out any bulbs, they have to comply with the ordinance, so.
So changing a bulb in an existing, uh.
So that you have to meet the Kelvin level.
Okay, so the thirty-five hundred fixture, thank you.
But he could get a lower powered bulb, couldn't he?
Sure.
Yeah.
So it's not like changing an old fixture.
Yeah, no, it's not changing the fixture.
I just didn't wanna yet open the can of worms and suddenly have to install five different places around the.
No, you're not gonna have to install all your light bulbs.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but he's gotta get a variance for the sign, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so a phase change requires a sign permit, which triggers compliance, so we'll have to verify all of that through a sign company that you contract with.
Okay, so it, it is too close to the line according to variant, according to ordinance?
Yeah, well, it's also too big, uh, I believe that's, the requirements are smaller for S nine B, SD nine B.
Thirty-two squared feet?
It's smaller than that sixteen. Well, that's something we can work out.
Okay.
Through permitting.
We would just have say he's gotta get a sign permit.
Yep.
That would cover all that.
Yeah, it would.
Again, as Megan said, we, we should include the, the language that we feel this meets the spirit and intent, intent of the, uh, of the ordinance and, uh, special land use. That sound good, Megan?
Um, that you recognize that this use is within the intent of the zoning district inappropriate?
Well, and I do think some security would help to, um, keep any kids away, but it was gonna cause issues if there were some security on the building. Whether it's a ring doorbell or, or, you know, camp, ring cam or whatever, so that would be helpful, I think, to, um, maybe for the neighborhood, not, so that, um, any teenagers that weren't intending to cause issues might not do that if they saw a camera.
Yeah.
So you, you specifically saying you want some cameras?
I think it would be a good idea, as a resident's already, uh, expressed concern about that.
You okay with that?
Absolutely.
At least if there are issues, hopefully that'll help identify the people involved, so.
Front, front and back?
I would just say some kind of.
Okay.
I'd leave that up to them, but some.
Okay. In, uh, in addition to the other, should we say that it basically meets the, uh, standards required by special land use? Yeah, okay. Anybody else got any comments? How about tell me to make a motion?
I thought that's where you're writing everything down.
All right, I'll make it, uh, I'll make a motion that we, I'm gonna get back to my agenda. We approve PC file two oh two four, Dan and Andrea Kneppert, said it right that time. Uh, requesting a special land use amendment and final site plan approval for a new community center located a formerly youth church at five three one one Sunny Side Drive, parcel zero eight three five one seven seven zero zero, zero one one. And, um, it is, um, I, I would add to that motion that we recognize that this use, use meets the spirit intent of, uh, the residential zoning district, uh, under special land use. That, uh, this use meets all the, uh, specifications required for approval of specialist, special land use. And this is subject to, um, verification of the following administratively, an acceptable landscape plan consisting mostly of plantings. Understand what I mean by that? Verif, uh, verification of lighting, a sign permit, verification of, uh, a security system with cameras, ca- a camera or plural, singular or plural. Did I get them all, I think I did?
I think so.
Probably, yeah.
Yep.
Support.
Tom, you did?
Yes, support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is P C, regular business, P C two oh two four dash zero one zero, Chris Terry. He is, um, requesting a conceptual site plan approval in order to construct, to construct two buildings in the existing Trillium Village of Clarkson Development. Megan, would you like to go over the history of this?
Sure, it's a long history, um, it goes back to nineteen ninety-eight, um, and that's when a hundred and thirty-two unit apartment complex, um, was approved and that was later converted into condominiums. Of all of the, um, things that were approved in that site plan, which we just kind of glossed over, right? Um, it, there was only, um, a single twenty-four unit building was constructed. Um, and then in two thousand sixteen, a portion of that site was converted to the Vista Springs Assisted Living and that's a eighty unit, eighty-three bed senior living facility. So this proposal is a new phase of that overall Trillium Village project, um, and it calls for thirty-two bedroom units, rental units located in an eighteen unit and a twelve unit building. The buildings are located in a similar position to those that were originally approved, however, since nineteen ninety-eight, um, your side yard setbacks have changed significantly. Um, and so as proposed, um, in keeping with the original site plan, the side yard setbacks would need a variance. So you should, um, be aware of that and that variance, so it originally, um, so it's a required seventy-foot side yard setback and they're only providing fifty-three. Also, there's an item that you should note, the apartment buildings are proposed at three levels, but two stories, um, and that has to deal with the grave and where the basement is. This situation has happened before and I'll defer to Mister Ottman for more clarification, but in those, um, in that instance, the building official made a, made a, reviewed the plans and verified that the height requirements were met. So there's, are significant natural features on the site, but, um, they're mostly keeping out of them, there's a wetland, um, throughout the site were pre- previously identified, um, where there were impacts, which were minor, the, a wetland permit was issued. For this proposal in front of you tonight, it does not impact the wetlands. And then in terms of woodlands, there are several woodlands throughout the site, primarily located within the wetlands along the perimeter site, so there's not significant tree removal being proposed. Then for the building layout, um, there's significant screening between the apartments and the adjacent Highwood Village subdivision, um, and it's conforming again to the previous building location and improve, and improvements. The parking meets the ordinance, um, the site access is from Lorac Drive counting to Maybe Road, I, I drove it today, it's really narrow in there, cause they're private roads, but that was how the original development is laid out and this is just a phase of it. There's safety paths, um, there's an existing safety path along Maybe Road and the internal walkways, um, that were proposed for the site, um, back in ninety-eight were constructed. Um, and so the proposed apartments will have sidewalks accessing each building and it'll link into this, uh, well, and it'll, and the sidewalk extends to the eighteen unit building, will go to the walkway system that's around the pond. The landscaping was previously installed, so what's proposed for this is mostly foundation plannings, um, the lighting complies, um, but probably you saw the most, uh, thing that didn't keep in character with nineteen ninety-eight is the architecture that's proposed. Um, it's a very modern looking building, um, there's nothing, it, um, and it's more contemporary than the current buildings, there's nothing to say that, in the ordinance or in that original proposal to, to say that that wouldn't be allowed. However, one thing we wanted to note that, um, for you to know that rooftop decks are proposed, um, and that was something that was not part of that original plan. So in summary, the, the proposed site plan's consistent with the previously approved plan, um, again, it needs a variance for the side yard setback and that's due to that ordinance change over the years. So they'll either need to get a variance or they'll need to modify it and also, again, um, review by the building official of the building height.
Does the building official also have to verify the, there's front units and back units. The back, am I right on this, the back units will have more, be more accessible for the exit concept of basement units, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, he's gonna look at everything to make sure it meets code, so.
Gonna look at that too.
That's part of it.
Okay. Anything else?
No, not from our perspective, I don't know from Mister Ottman or from the engineering.
Brian, you have anything?
Well, I just wanted to mention that, that the ordinance was amended in twenty, two thousand twenty-one, um, and it was, uh, there was a lot of discussion on that, that amendment at the time. Very controversial, but, but it was passed and obviously this or, this site plan predates it, predates that, that requirement. This, when this site plan came before the commission, um, this is a permitted use by right, I, it's in a multi-family zoning district. However, when they, uh, received the wetland permit, that notified the neighbors and, uh, the neighbors were very, very, uh, had a lot to say about the wetland at that time, uh, for the permit, but ultimately the commission granted approval. But, but yeah, it was a very controversial site at the time.
Ellen, did you want anything?
Most of the utilities and storm sewer, like sanitary water, all is existing on the site and they've pre-planned, like, uh, you know, the storm water, there's a detention pond that was planned for the whole site at the time. We don't have the calculations for it, but we kind of think it's for the entire site, it also includes detention even for, I think there's a drain that comes in through there. The amount of impervious area might increase, like it depends, the W R C requirement would be dependent on, um, the amount of disturbance that they do. Which they haven't really shown exactly on the plan, so they'll have to provide us more information at the next level, if they disturb over an acre, it's gonna trigger stormwater requirements kicking in, so they'll have to meet the current stormwater management requirements. If they're under an acre, it won't trigger that, but it, it kind of depends on, on their next stage of the plan. And if they don't trigger it in this stage and then they build, there's another building showing on their P U D for the future, when that building goes in, if then. When that building goes in, if then it adds up to the acre, then it would be triggered at that time. So as they progress, they should consider any future plans as well, because they might wanna plan for that now, if that's in their plan for the future. Do you know what I mean? So, but we don't have all their stormwater information yet, that would be more on the site plan.
Okay. Question for the commission, clarification on any of those issues?
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously a very interesting site and I would venture to say ninety-five percent of the people who live in the township don't even know it's up there. Um, you're obviously only impacting the first street of the Birdlands. Um, there is some elevation changes severe to the property in certain points, but my only thing would be just, you know, that, that's gotta be screened. But there's also existing buildings in Trillium already there, that are right there, so.
I have a full page of questions, but isn't the other time?
Let, let's give Mr. Terry an, an opportunity first.
So I'd like to say that uh, it's, it is in the exact existing footprint, correct? Like I kept it in the exact footprint that was approved prior in nineteen ninety-nine and then two thousand five and then two thousand sixteen. It was approved again, um, and then I'd also like to note that the setback was forty feet and they were fifty-three and then it got moved to seventy. That's, that's quite a big difference, um, and then, yeah, so all the parking, everything like, like they had stated is already in the utility. The site is to grade, so when I look at this and you say, you know, site plan approval, um, the site is complete. Just the construction of these three buildings basically have not been completed. So the majority of the sidewalks are in, the grade has all been done around the whole site, you know, everywhere, the water retention is in. And, yeah, I'm only looking at the twelve and the eighteen right now and I agree that we can discuss the twenty-four at a later date. As far as the storm water is that those, that pavement has not been in yet, but the twelve and the eighteen, everything there is complete, is existing and basically ready to go.
I think, okay.
Yes.
I think, since I've been on the planning commission for a while, uh, I did see this come forth one other time and, and some of the talk that happened previously was that there's like pads that, that, they're being built. There's, you know, three or four pad sites, like obviously the one is built now, but the, like say the two that you're proposing, uh, they're on the existing layout of what was originally designed for, i- in my mind. So obviously the architecture is different than what originally was, but the, I, I think the uh, the, the layout space is really on the pad or the, the build envelope of, of where they were approved originally, so. And uh, um, so I guess I just wanted to bring it up, so it's, it's not like he's moved it around or, or done anything different. It's, he's, he's putting a building in the same spot that was approved originally.
And we lost a half-story too, because it was to prove for two and a half originally and I'm not asking for that two and a half. Um, I'm just gonna ask for the variance to place it where it was originally supposed to be at fifty-three feet off of the corner for numerous reasons, like the parking and the access and the grade and the utilities and transformers. The whole site work has all been done already, I mean, I'm, I'm disturbing very, very little, it's, it's pretty much to grade at this point.
Okay.
One, one other comment, I guess to go along with what Mr. Terry just said too, is that we kind of glossed over, talked about real quick. What he's asking for is, it's, it looks like a three-story building, but um, basically in our township, but basically you have a two or three-story building as long as it, it's under the max height for what we call a two-story building. So we have like a maximum height restriction.
And the basement level has to deal with the percentage that it's below grade, so this is built into something that, you know, the building's gonna go like this and you have a slope that, that, like a walkout.
That's why they call it like a two and a half story, but basically.
But no, it's only two, it was two and, it was approved originally for two and a half, is what I'm saying.
Right, well, well, that's, I'm getting at, it's basically, you're staying within the max height of a two-story building, so.
Correct.
Yeah, because that was another uh, discrepancy we found and I don't know if it just got left off when we recodified the ordinance uh, in twenty oh nine, I think, or twenty oh eight. Um, cause it used to be two and a half in the old ordinance when this was likely approved. But I, it's two stories now, that's what the ordinance says now, so.
Correct, two stories.
The, the, the building that's on top of the roof, because they're having rooftop access now, is, is the height of all that still within the, the envelope of, of that? Requirement, so. Cause I mean, obviously you have some kind of stair access or whatever, that's what's sticking up in the air there, so. It's permanent structure, right, so. I just wanted to make sure that was part of the uh, height requir- requirements.
Uh, this is not a public hearing, but I, I ask if anybody in the audience would like to say anything? Nope, doesn't look like it, okay. Comments from the commission, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this, maybe just for Brian or maybe for Ron, I, I don't know. When you change ordinances, like the setback thing, just in general, I'm not getting specific with this one. Is there any discussion when they adopt new ordinances to grandfather in, you know, situations like this where it's okay to, to ignore the intent of the new ordinance? Because this is a new building, I don't care if it was approved, you know, in nineteen ninety-eight, it's a new building. Anybody else putting up a new building would have to meet those requirements. If you didn't want them to meet the requirements because it was pre-approved, is that ever discussed when you adopt ordinances?
Well, yeah, there's always grandfathering in the zoning ordinance, however, with this particular site plan, that this building is completely different architecturally, you know, in terms of, it may have, it complies to the number of units, but the footprint of that building is totally different, I think, than what that rectangle is on the drawing, you know?
No, it's the exact same, the footprint fits exact to the T.
It's literally down to the inch.
Down to the inch to where the existing approval, ninety-six point six seven, everything is the exact same in that square, not a thing has changed.
So bottom line is, is he's not grandfathered in because the site plan went dormant at that point in time. So, you know, this is a new site plan approval all over again, so he's gotta comply or seek a variance. Which he's already applied for.
And I would like to just say that um, the, s- what is the definition of like the site plan? Cause the site is complete, all the infrastructures and just the buildings didn't get constructed, those two buildings, so. That would be, that was, you know, I'm gonna go through the variance and the motions because that's what I have to do at this point, but I felt that the site was completed, I'm not altering anything with the site, basically. So the site plan, what was approved, the footprint, I'm staying within, um, nothing changed. Nothing changed besides the look of the building, the number of units are the same, the square, the, the pad that I'm putting in is the exact same. And uh, yeah, so I, I was under the impression that it was going, but, you know, the, and Dick said once, one year after no construction, you lose site plan approval. But what is the definition of a site plan? I mean, I, I think that.
I, I wasn't around when this was approved, but I don't think we got detailed site plans for this particular site, did we? Wasn't it more of a conceptual plan for the whole project?
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is.
So it really wasn't a final site plan approval.
In, when in?
Well, I guess that's.
Two thousand sixteen when they, uh, the, the assisted living went in?
Two thousand sixteen, that was an amended final site plan to allow the as- assisted living and removed a couple of, of, you know, apartment buildings to do that.
Yep.
So, um, bottom line is, is there's been no permits pulled on this pro- on this property since Vista, or Trillium Village of Vista Springs. So that's why it's a new site plan, so.
And.
And it wasn't a P U D, it was a site plan based on our own zoning.
Yeah, the R two.
R two, thank you.
So to his point though, does he just go pull the original construction drawings and that's your site plan? Is that, is that kind of what you're saying?
I, I'm just saying that like.
Cause you're not changing it.
I don't, I, yeah, I felt that it shouldn't have lost site plan approval in the first place, which would have triggered this variance. Yes, it needed to go in front of the building department to make sure if, it needed all the requirements, codes, everything. But the fact that, you know, we spent a lot of time and money and putting it in that exact same footprint under the impression, because it was advertised that way, that it was site plan approved and that's not on anybody but me. Um, but, you know, that's the way it was advertised and uh, like, you know, I, I have a letter from the water department saying, you know, the tap fees and everything have been paid and, and the stubs are in and uh, there was a lot of research beforehand before we even got to this point and then it just got caught at the last moment, basically. It went from amended site plan to now a complete final site plan approval.
And the variance is a Z B A variance, correct, obviously?
Mm-hmm.
Can you?
And I would like to say too, that the, you know, so this is a condominium project, so I'm currently paying the dues for a two-bedroom, you know, unit for every single one of those, every single month, even though it's not there. Um, and if I don't get granted that variance and then the number of units shrink, it's, you know, I mean, it, the, the master, the master deed got amended in January, I have a copy of that here and that went to the township. The township, you know, assigned the building's new text I D numbers and, and all that, none of this got caught to the very last. So I just think that it's important that, you know, that, that community needs fifty-four more units in order to support it. Uh, as everybody drove back there and have seen the way, so it, it's in need of attention. You know, I lived in this township for thirty years, I was here before that was development was, was built, I've rode my bike through there, I mean, I've, I've seen it for a long time. And uh, it's a diamond in the rough and I think that I'm the right person to, to bring it back, so.
So explain how the condominium works, because it, it, it's a condominium for the whole project. It's not individual condominium lots within this big par- parcel, it's one big condo, right?
Correct, so when, but it's not, so when the master deed got amended, there's a lot, one thirty-seven, one for, each one has their own yard as, as, as uh, the assisted living, they have their own little yard that they take care of. So the condominium covers the park, all the common roads and um, basically, you know, the, the lighting, any, any, any common element. But where my, where the two buildings I have, where they sit, you know, I'm res- I'm responsible to take care of that property, take care of my own building. What we pay into is the roads, the clubhouse, the irrigation, the snowplow removal. All, the, the, so, so it's, it's clearly defined in the mast- in the master deed that, so even though Vista Springs is more than fif- they have fifty-four units, I have fifty-four, there's twenty-four single unit building and then there's one above the clubhouse, which makes one thirty-three. So each person pays that portion on their number of units.
And they're all paying proportionately, the same amount or what?
Correct, yes, each unit pays the same amount.
So it's one big H O A and they all pay into it?
Yep.
So if the road in, in front of the existing condo building there, I noticed, has been patched a, a number of times.
Correct.
So everybody in there basically sort of indirectly contributed to that.
So just the twenty-four and the, the way it's written is the twenty-four and the twelve unit would share that portion. Um, the eighteen unit in the back, that portion is a hundred percent on my building because the other, they don't really utilize that. But, and then anything coming through that main road would then be divided between everybody back there. Everything is very clearly divine, uh, divided in, in.
So there's a shared road agreement?
Yes, correct.
Do you already own that other vacant lot that is not?
No, sir.
So whoever owns it is paying into that right now, presumably.
I'm paying into that. I have the purchase agreement, I, I, I was under the impression, like I said, when I purchased this, that it was basically going to be, I designed it, you know, I already got my soil borings, everything, I was under the impression that I was gonna be able to go to the building department and pull a permit, um, and that, and that had stopped after I already, you know, I, I bought both parcels as they were advertised, site plan approved, um, so I have extended that purchase contract with the taking on the property taxes and all the H O, H O A fees.
So why aren't things being maintained? I mean, that, the bridge across the pond has been collapsed.
Right, that's.
The clubhouse is a mess.
It's a mess and that's, and I, I can't, I can't tell you that because I just, I just got involved into this, um, and so, yeah, I mean, I plan to change all of that, uh, is s- s- sooner than later, um, you know, so. They, they need help back there and it's, it's uh, and I think the fact that it's hidden, eh, there's a lot of residents that have no clue that that is back there. Um, and I think that that, for that is why it kind of just has gone under the radar, so.
Belinda?
So, is the common space of the whole area owned by all of the units?
Correct.
And it's uh, shared maintenance proportionally, including the pond?
Yes, including the pond.
And is there a maintenance agreement on the pond?
The, it's all in the H O A, it's all within the, you, you, as, as far as I understand, all of our fees go into maintaining that pond and the irrigation, everything is, e- everybody, cause that's, that's everybody's kind of storm run, uh, water runoff, including Highland Village, um.
So is there a maintenance agreement, Brian?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Because that's, that's a huge expense, um, at some point if it has to be dredged, just point that out.
Yeah, it's currently being maintained, I mean, I have financials from them and records of everything that they spend their money on and I know that the pond is on there as one. The irrigation is on there, the snow removal is on there, everything, this, this subdivision has been operating for twenty years. It, it's not nothing, the only thing that's new is the buildings that I'm proposing to put there.
Is there one H O A or two H O As?
One.
And um, are the residents the, on the board or who, who runs the H O A?
The residents currently in the twenty-four are on the board and that's, that's it.
For the whole complex?
For the whole complex.
Nobody from Vista Springs is on it?
Uh, no, nobody's from Vista Springs, Vista Springs kind of just um, pays their bill. So I plan to, to change that, cause there needs to be some changes a- around there, so I'm gonna, you know.
Belinda, if I can interject, though, if I understood him right. If, if you asked if everybody pays for everything, I think I heard you say the, the little split off of the road that goes back to the condos in your property, you pay for that piece.
Well, so the, the twenty-four unit building and the twelve unit building, we share that whole little loop-de-loop. But then if you look at the eighteen unit building, there's a parking lot there, that, that's my responsibility, yes, that would be my responsibility.
I'm confused.
That doesn't seem logical, cause it's, it would be general common element.
I, I got the, uh, but does that, is that affecting something or we're just curious? I have the uh, I printed off the amended master deed, I can, but I.
You have the exhibit B.
What's that?
The exhibit B to the block, to the documents, but that's not relevant.
Well. Yeah, but that's where it says.
It's not even relevant.
Yeah, okay, cause that's where it says everything is, all the shares, all the dues, everything is clearly lined up in there and split up.
And so once you're building, are they rentals or are they condos?
They're rentals, yes.
They're rental condos?
They're apartments.
They're apartments, okay.
Yes, yes.
So however many units you have in that apartment building will be your proportionate if you have, um.
Yes, correct, I have a twelve, the twelve unit building pays twelve, the thirty unit building pays thirty.
And then what does the assisted living pay?
Fifty-four.
And who will own and maintain the walkways and be responsible for snow removal?
The H O A.
H O A, okay. And are the wetlands all protected or are they protected and unprotected? Well, some of it has to be unprotected because there's a deti- a detention pond in it, so.
Well, but they, they got permitting to do that from Eagle, N D U Q at the time. So they have a wetland permit through the township, it's been in operation, you know, in existence for many, many years.
So I'm just wondering, are there protected and unprotected in there, in that sub- in that whole community?
Well, I, I, it's a regulated wetland. Well, I, I, it's a regulated wetland, so.
It's all regulated?
Well, there's detention areas that, that are not.
So that would be unreg- unregulated?
Well, yeah, but it's all controlled by the master deed, in a condominium unit project like this. Master deed provides for common maintenance of all the amenities, all of the general common element, which is everything but the buildings. So, I mean, and they're all sharing it equally, you know, Vista Springs is fifty-four out of however many units. They have fifty-four slices of the pie that they paid for, so, and these u- these buildings will have the same type of arrangement.
Well, I'm wondering, since they're building on this space, will they now be required to also provide. A maintenance and dredging schedule for that pond?
Well, it's gonna, that's up to Eagle, I mean, that, that's, and again, this, this is just building on a pad that already exists. Everything on that site already exists, the pad is graded, leveled, it's all there, so, I mean.
I did email a drone shot, I don't know, have you seen the site?
No, I mean, I, my computer died, so, but.
I, I'm asking, but, did you see, have you seen this, the site?
I drove through there today, yeah, I mean, I, I like the site, I'm just telling you. You need to make sure that there's, um.
Yeah, it's been maintained for twenty, over twenty years, I mean, it's, that, that was in, in existence, I.
It's obvious that he's gotten the financials and they're contributing some, some budget to that. I don't know what relevancy that has to these two buildings, but.
Well, I, I think it's relevant, relevant, I didn't say that, cl- clearly. We have situations in this township where there's. Cross, cost-sharing agreements that are pretty messed up. And, um. And it's created problems, and I realize that's not directly a problem that comes. On the township's shoulders, but it is indirectly, and, um, I'd like to make sure that. I mean, when I drive through this project, there's things that look like stuff's not being managed. I agree, it's, it's potentially a gorgeous project, gorgeous site. So, at, at, my preference, sometime before final site plan approval, I'd like. Whether our attorney does it, or you hire an attorney to give us a summary of how this whole maintenance of the whole project is shared. Managed and shared.
It's all, it, it's all broke up in the master deed, and like I said, this, this has been operating for well over twenty years. And, and I understand w- where you're coming from, but. You, I think that, you know, it's, the reason why there's nothing going on is because there's twenty-four units built there. When it needs a hundred and thirty-three, so by me adding that extra thirty and adding that extra money. And, you know, somebody there advocating for it to be nice, um, you know. It makes, makes, ma- makes all the difference, so it's already clearly defined in the master deed that was amended this year. Where all of the dues, what everybody's fees are, how everything is maintained, it's already been in there and approved by Oakland County.
I'd like to see a copy of that. Only because we've had issues, I mean, I, I do think it needs to be spelled out, so. I mean, I like the, I like the concept, I like the idea, I hope you build it, because I think it'll do, um, that community of, you know. It, it'll be great for it to have more units, but I think it needs to be clearly spelled out. What is the common space, who pays what, um, who's, I think there needs to be a maintenance, uh, sched- and. A maintenance schedule for the pond, because our code calls for it today, um, I would just like to see that, but.
The card goes to call for it, is it? We haven't passed it yet.
What's that?
She said our code calls for a maintenance, uh, schedule.
It does now.
It does, yeah.
It is, oh, it's already in there now, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the rest of the site plan. Uh, how does everybody feel about the architectural style? I, I'm not crazy about it, um. Our master plan does talk about, uh. Common styles in, in, throughout it, and, uh. I mean, it doesn't mean the whole township has to have a common plan, but I think it talks about consistency and stuff like that. If this project was across the pond and almost had a little more segregation, I could almost, I could maybe. Like it there, I'm just, I like, I like what you did, I like the style of it. I think it would look great back here, but, uh, I'm not sold on it there, so.
I liked it, I liked the architecture.
You like it in this location?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I'm less concerned maybe with the style, um, but I, I wanna make sure that the right building materials are there. I think the top was, talk about composite siding and. I'm just concerned about the longevity of that, so.
Of the composite siding?
Yeah, there's, I, I, I don't know, I, I tried to look up, what was the name, I, there was specified that, like, the type of siding. It just said kinda composite, so I kinda did an internet search and I couldn't find exactly, is it thick, is it thin, how, how long does it last?
Um, it's a sample, it has like a twenty-five year color shield warranty, I mean, it's, it's, it's virtually indestructible. It's, it's a lot better than the alternative of vinyl, um, it has a wood look to it, wood grain.
Okay.
I'm using a nice brick, I mean, I, I could use vinyl and it's gonna be a half of the cost, uh, and that's what's currently there. I, I, yeah, I'm surprised that, uh.
It's like a composite deck material, it's the same type of thing, probably not as thick as maybe some of the decking.
Correct, and it's tongue and groove, it's a rain screen, it's high quality, yes, yes, yep, yep.
That answers my question?
Yeah.
It's, it should be main- pretty much maintenance-free.
It's pretty much maintenance-free, yes, yep.
I guess that's like, as compared to.
Yeah.
Um, something needs to be painted or.
Something that needs to be painted, yeah, trying to avoid, uh, you know, obviously a power wash it and keep it nice and clean. But the routine maintenance and the aesthetics of it, look, it looks like real wood.
I guess I like it as far as it gives the, you know, some character to the building as far as, instead of being all brick.
I feel like it fits in with the trees and the woods and the setting of the, the, you know, the whole kind of ambiance factor, um. Nobody really sees it, technically, you're not supposed to be driving through there unless you, uh, you know, it's, 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 it's basically, it's a private drive. It's, you know, one way, one way out, um. Yeah.
I say, we didn't ask the question specifically, but the decks are all, uh, composite material as well.
The, the decks, um, are, were gonna be prefabbed, they're, they're steel.
Okay.
I can make them composite, but they come, uh, they come pre-made, and they have the bolts that tie on and the, the cables that go down to it. So they have the option to either make it steel, or I could do, uh, composite insert, if that's what.
Well, I mean, steel's fine, I, I was getting at it's, it's not just regular wood that.
No.
That can rot out over time.
It's not gonna rot, everything here, these materials are made to last, I mean, I, I get this is something new, but. You know, we are advancing as, as we go on in building materials, construction, the, um, people's taste, everything. I feel like this is something that Independence doesn't have, I've lived in, like I said, I lived here my whole life, so I've lived in five of these apartment complexes around here. They're gonna be, you know, they have, I have an elevator in there, I have package room delivery, um, that's gonna. You, your Amazon packages, key card access, um, it's, you know, it's gonna cater to. I would say more, you know, empty nesters or high-paying, you know, individuals that don't want the hassle of homeownership. And I would say that this is also in our master plan is the, um, Dixie Highway Improvement area. And what better way to bring in, um, you know, people to spend money that, and, that are gonna contribute to that.
Brian, did you have something you wanted to, that started to say?
I, I mean, I was gonna ask Mr. Opman, is, I mean, you know, when you bring a case to the ZBA and we clean up an old. Non-conforming variance, I mean, I guess. Little bit different here, but I mean, is, isn't that kinda how I'm viewing this? This already exists. It's already been approved in different reiterations, you were saying, two or three times.
Yeah.
So the pad is the pad, you know, if we wanna place minor conditions on them here or there, I, and, I mean. Rewriting the whole master deed and bylaws is, isn't in the cards, and in my mind, it, it exists. To get all those people to vote together to recreate all of it, I, I don't, I don't understand why I'm burdening him with that.
It took almost a year for us to do that, that, that had to be done for, for this to happen, and it just, it was just completed, and it was.
And to go through it and do it again, I don't understand why I'm burdening you with that, you know?
This, I, I feel that this is an improvement for the township, and for, somebody is going to, you know, eventually this project's going to happen. Um, and this is, this is a good pro- this, what I'm proposing is a, a good plan. It's been sitting for twenty years, I don't see, feel like it should need to sit any longer.
I don't like the way the, uh, the main entrance, the main road coming from the back where the courthouses are. Basically goes through the parking lot of the senior housing complex, where we have elderly people walking around. And then to aggravate that problem, the exit on the maybe is one way, you can't re- it's not really an exit, it's an entrance only. So all the exiting traffic has to go through that, that parking lot for the senior housing complex. I, I don't think it's safe, um, but I don't know how you change it. The, I, the, the option, I don't like the, the no exit on the maybe. I understand that was probably done because of the congestion in maybe in Dixie. Um. I'd say probably poorly designed in the first place, but yeah, maybe it's too late to do something about it now, but I, I don't like it.
I have a question, Brian, is there a way to approve, um, this plan? With a maintenance schedule for the pond, uh, required? Not, not to change the HOA bylaws or master deed, but something in the plan that requires. Um, a maintenance schedule for that pond. I mean, I, I agree, you don't want it to change.
Impacting the pond whatsoever, so I'm, I'm not sure how you can tie a condition. Well, it's not at this point, it's, he's not in his plans. If you were modifying this pond, then you would trigger wetland permit review and where you could build in those reasonable conditions. I, I'm not sure that the pond is relevant to what he's doing.
Also, this is a conceptual plan review, so the next steps are that they go to the ZBA to see if they can get a variance. They receive the variance and then they can come back to you, um, for final site plan. Um, and then, but if he doesn't get the variance, he has to change his plans, so I think, I, I mean, it's very clear that you've all expressed. Concerns about the maintenance of the overall, the, the overall complex, um, the overall development. Um, and then I think it would be well for the applicant to take it under advisement, to get as much of that information. And submit it with their final site plan, if they choose to go forward after whatever happens at the ZBA. Um, and then at that time, you can look at whether it was appropriate or not to impose conditions. But being cognizant of that, this is, uh, you know, this is just, this is part of a development that was envisioned. A long time ago, and then it's already built, um, and it already has a working. Working master deed and working condo association, where actually some of the conditions that you may want to have in. Maybe changing roads or changing layouts or maintenance schedules would place an undue burden on the applicant. In order to get those things done, but maybe that's something that the applicant can explore before they come back and give you. A- a- and, and give you some information about that, also, I think, as consultants and staff, we hear your concerns and that when it comes back. Will incorporate those into our reviews.
I mean, I.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and I understand all of that, and it's fair, i- it's fair. But looking at the site right now, there's some deficiencies, which you acknowledge, you know, and you wanna change it, but I mean, when you have a bridge that's broken, you have this. That's not what, what we would call a good, a good feel for the township at all. Good, it is hidden, so you can't see that, but you're gonna change that.
I propose to come in and to finish all of that, I wanna connect that, I wanna put in the buildings, the building permit, the, the building inspector's gonna now get involved. Uh, that, that whole site is going to change, that's the, the, you know, the purpose of this, to put more restrictions on me and more of a burden. I feel just, is not fair, this is something that has been in existence, it's operating. Is it not operating up to par? That's because there's no existing, the, 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 those buildings need to be there in order for that to, to happen.
Right, but you can understand, you know, the concerns, because it isn't up to par, and it's not being maintained. And certainly, we have to believe that you're gonna do it, and we want to, because we want to be better for the township.
I would take that.
Isn't right now, and so that's what the concerns are, but I don't propose putting any restrictions unnecessary on you. Because that would be self-defeating in, in my, but we have to look down the road and make sure, I'm not saying this. But that you can't get away with something, and we end up with two more buildings with a broken bridge and some other things, we don't want that either. That, that's, you know, that's.
I understand, I would take that code enforcement or the building inspector will make that bridge be operational before.
I'll just use that as an example, you know, I, I don't care about the bridge personally.
Those, all of those improvements are, are gonna take place, I, I just have purchased this property in the last cou- three months. Um, well, the, the twelve in January or something, but, uh, yeah. So I haven't had a chance to get in there and do anything, be- because, uh, to be honest with you, I was, I, like I said, I purchased it thinking that it. It, it was advertised as being site planned, approved, and just permits, and it turned out to be way more than that, and it's taken a lot longer, so. I'm already really deep into the process to, uh, to, to, to do anything else without your blessing. Would be foolish.
I think you're gonna find, working with the commission, working with the administration, very, very. Helpful to you, I mean, we want this to be a win-win for everybody, if it's a win-win for you, for us, for the administration. It's gonna be a win for the township, that's what we're all trying to do, so, I mean, we are on your side, we really are. It may not seem like it.
No, I know, I appreciate, I know, like I said, I'm from this township too, I lived here my whole life, I've raised two children here. Uh, my son actually worked in this building all summer, he's worked for the Parks and Rec for the last four years when he's home from college, I mean. You know, I, I'm not going anywhere, I plan on living in that, that development one day, to be honest with you, so. You know, I, I'm gonna take great pride in it, and I take great bro- pride into this township, and it's, it's gonna be a good asset for us.
That's what we all hope for, and are working towards.
I, I just have one question, and it, and it might be towards, uh, Mr. Galley, because he's on the zoning board, but, so I understand the whole concept that this. Plan was approved some years ago, and then it kinda went dormant, but it's still the plan, and that. But the thing I, Birdland was here before that plan also, and, and that, that variance will need to be still obtained or no? And that's why I was wondering, for Mr. Galley on the zoning board, will that be something that is just a given, you know, or?
The, no, I, no, nothing's ever given on our commission or the ZBA, and I'm only one vote, so. Um, you know, the case comes before you, and you judge the merits, if citizens show up, you listen to their comments and judge the merits of their comments as well. So, you know, to, to say what you're gonna do before that process happens.
But is that a big deal, seventy feet versus whatever it is?
It, you have to look at the whole, whole case and, and judge the comments is really all I can say.
All the neighbors affected by that will be alerted of the ZBA.
Three hundred feet of this property will be.
So, yeah, so I mean, so the people around there will be alerted and they can attend the meeting and, and they can also chime when they think it's a.
So that will still be a factor irrespective of the fact that this was already a site plan some years ago.
Yes, we, everybody on that commission, in my experience of being on it for ten years, or the ZBA has an open mind. You show up, you listen to it, we don't talk to each other about it beforehand or afterhand, and you.
Can't.
You hear it and you, you vote, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep.
It's very heavily wooded there, there's twenty-five thirty-foot pines that were planted, you know, twenty years ago, so now they've had time to really grow. And the original setback was forty, and they already were thirteen feet off that, which I think that they did a good job on not cramming things in here, you know, you will see a lot of developers, that would've been right on every line of every single, you know, this, it's very spaced out in there. Uh, we're not proposing to do anything else than what was originally proposed, and there's even more room the way that they put Vista Springs.
Some of that probably could be mitigated with, with landscaping too, I mean, if there's, if there's a lot of problems. A burn or something like this.
It's very, very heavily.
It is very heavily. It's very thick, yeah.
Here in Birdland, you don't, you don't even see this, you don't even see the current building at all, so.
I think that's the point, like.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I, I enjoyed the drive back there, it was cool, and I couldn't see any of Birdland, maybe at the, over near the Trillium side, but not, not on this side where your buildings are proposed, and I think to me, as a resident of Birdland, I'm not a resident of Birdland, but as a resident, I would think that if they can see you, that, that's the prob, that would be the problem, if they can't see you, then that would mitigate quite a bit.
Well, the ZBA gets a crack at this and we get another crack, and then the township board does, correct?
No.
No, we'll finally say, okay, well, we get another crack at it.
Just to rig your site plan, so this is what.
So on that note, I'll, uh, throw a motion out there and see where it goes, PC file two zero two four dash zero one zero, petitioner Chris Terry, five seven nine nine South Main Street, Suite twelve oh four, Clarkston, Michigan. Uh, requesting conceptual site plan approval in order to construct two new buildings in the existing Trillium Village of Clarkston. I motion that we grant the conceptual site plan approval with all the comments of the, uh, planning commission, all the notes and comments from staff and consultants, and, um, that's it.
ZBA approval.
Uh, yeah, ZBA approval on, um, the, uh, the variance of the side yard setback, um, due to a, um,
Change in.
Change in zoning by the planning commission a, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I support.
Do you wanna elaborate on the comments of the planning commission that you're referring to?
Just all of them.
That's pretty broad.
I don't, I don't, nothing specific bothers me, so that's my motion.
Okay.
Like I say, we have an ordinance that he said he has to do a maintenance schedule and that, that should be part of, uh,
That's already built in.
Right, that's, that's already built in, it isn't like he has to create something special, that should be part of, you know, what's already required, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that, that, you know, our engineer typically handles that, so, during the process.
I, I'd like something, if you don't wanna put it, that's fine, but I'd like something in there about obtaining a better understanding of the provisions of the master deed.
Maybe we should just see a copy of it.
Well, I'm not a lawyer, I, but, I mean, that might do it, but I, you know.
Financials usually aren't disclosed in master deeds, so I'm sure he has a financial statement from their board that writes out what they spend money on.
I think he's talking about the shared, um, responsibilities, who, you know, is responsible for what and how much.
I understand the issue about putting the burden of, if it's screwed up, putting the burden on him, but I guess I'd like to find out if it's a problem earlier than later, and make a educated decision about what to do about it then.
Yeah, I don't think that's a really big thing to ask for, we're just asking to find out who has the responsibility for the roads, for the pool, for the clubhouse, for the pond, and what are, what shares?
Every single person in there, all hundred and thirty-three.
So it's a condo, we will share, if it says something we don't like, then what are we gonna make him do? Say you can't build this?
I don't think we can.
I, I don't understand the process here.
I don't think we can.
It's a condo, so everybody's responsible for the common areas.
It's not the way it is in the condo project I live in.
Well.
I don't think that's too much to ask, um.
Maybe the case.
If they're, total number of units, okay, you're one sixtieth, um, responsible for the maintenance of the roads or the pool or the clubhouse or.
There's a hundred and thirty-three units and every unit has one, so each building, if the building is a thirty, it has thirty, the building is twelve, it has twelve, the twenty-four. Those are twenty-four individual owners, so they have twenty-four, Vista Springs is one owner, they have fifty-four. So yes, this is, it's a unique situation, but it is all very clearly spelled out. Uh, besides the bridge and the sites that are, that I'm proposing to develop, the sidewalks are clean, the parks are in, the pond was the fountain run, the fountain was running when you guys went through there. Um, you know, the, the police department, the fire department are through there quite often.
Could you do just a one-page statement, one, how many did you say as a total, a hundred and thirty?
Hundred and thirty-three.
Okay, a hundred and thirty-three condo owners have one thirty-one of one hundred and thirty-three percentage.
Absolutely, yeah, it's, it's clearly spelled out in the master deed.
For the roads, that's, that's the thing, none of us have seen the master deed, so if you could just put that page in there, that'd be great.
Okay, not a problem.
Yeah, summary of the master deed, what, who, who's responsible?
I printed it all off, and yeah, I for, I guess I must.
I know it's probably a lot of pages, we just want to say the page.
Yeah, it's fifty, fifty-something, I think, pages.
Yeah, we're just interested in the page that shows the responsibility of the different roads, clubhouse, pool, all that, yeah.
Okay.
So, will you amend your motion?
I'll amend the motion to state that the petitioner at the next meeting provide a brief summary of the breakdown of the shared costs for the condominium association, and any relevant documents that would be helpful in us understanding that.
Second.
Yeah, I support, right.
You support the?
Yeah.
His motion.
Okay, you're kinda quiet.
amended motion.
The amended motion.
Okay, Belinda?
Oh, are we doing a roll call?
Yeah, please.
Okay, Bill Scarborough?
Yes.
Joe Suter?
Yes.
Belinda Billings, yes, Brian Yalley?
Yes.
Jason Borstein?
Yes.
Ron Ritchie?
Yes.
Tom Patel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Your approval? Thank you.
Approved.
Good.
It's a conceptual site.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All subjects again, thank you, thank you all, appreciate your time.
Okay.
Next item is approval of the September twelve minutes, anybody having changes?
Oh, uh, one was pointed out to me, um, Brian, on page three, about halfway down. Commissioner Billings stated that landscaping is the best impression, I think, I said first impression for development.
Okay.
Anything else, if not, about a motion?
Motion approved. To adjourn.
Did I hear a second?
A second.
What was the?
No.
Opposed, but.
Stay here all night.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Consultants report, Megan, you got anything?
No, not tonight, thank you.
Discussion, Joe?
Yeah, I, I just got a couple briefly, one, I apologize for the phone ringing, but I give Lou absolute power to call when she's home alone without a daycare worker, and if she has to get a hold of me, she has to, unfortunately. You know, vibrator doesn't work.
Bottom of the seat.
Good enough, anyway, I just wanted to make sure for clarification, uh, that we all know what happened at the board meeting the other night, and, uh, uh, the proposal for Red Barn was denied, and I wanted just clarification, because I was a little bit I didn't understand, uh, until we went through the process, what our role was as a, as a planning commission for wetlands, and we're the wetlands board, I guess, and it's reporting to nobody. You know, our, our decision is the last decision, as far as I understand it, so the way the motion was made um, to send this to the, um, board for the, uh, approval of the, uh, change to the zoning.
Yes.
Right, was the, the, uh, the Woodlands proposal or approval to, I mean, not, not Wood, uh, Wetlands approval was conditioned upon the board approving the zoning, and of course, they didn't, so then I just wanted to get it clear and on record that the Wetlands is now free of any, uh, uh, wetland board approval to disable it, fill it out, and out, and that's, that's the motion, and that's what it is, and I wanna make it clear, so what are you saying?
The Wetlands motion was separate from anything?
Yes, it was, but the, but the, the proposal to send it to the board had that in it, and you'd be only to consult the minutes.
No, but, if I can restate that, the wet, the motion to approve the Wetlands, um, permit was subject to approval of the rezoning.
Yeah. Had that. Right, right, yeah, sorry, so, I mean, it's important to get that clear, to me, it is, so what we did, the Wetlands Board did is like vaporized. Maybe not vaporized, but it's not, I, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause there's been some questions.
There's no approval for Phil.
There's no approval for Phil for those wetlands, they're as protected as they were.
Do you have any contradiction to that?
I, I'd have to look at the minutes to see exactly what it's.
Assuming they might say that.
Yeah, assuming that they say it, but yeah, it's null and void.
That's what it says. Yeah, that's what it says, and I just wanted to, but you can verify that and double check it, let us know, if you find anything that's different. Okay.
The true, true ordinance amendments have not been presented to the board yet, um, Brian made an attempt to get them to the last board, and you're gonna pursue the next one.
I would try it.
Yeah.
Board meeting. Board meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the tree preservation and the sign thing, posting of the sign.
One question about what Mr. Terry was saying, what did he say, like fifty-four of those units would be apartments? What, didn't he say apart?
Most of the current units are subleased anyway, so that's.
So is part of the rental, the lease, go to the HOA then?
Yes.
No.
Well, no, 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 it's.
The whole building?
It would.
No.
I mean, he's basically paying for the dues for all those units.
And.
Out of their rent, he's, they're essentially paying whatever that HOA due, I mean, he's gonna recoup the cost of whatever that slice of the pie they're gonna pay.
So, uh, does he own a lot of the units in the existing condominium building?
No, it's the previous owners of the site own it.
That's what I thought, okay, wait.
Yeah.
So, the people, there's other owners that own the existing condos, they're paying rent to those owners. Those owners have the responsibility to pay the dues to the HOA. Now, the owner could negotiate with the renter to pay the rent to me and the HOA, and a portion of the rent to the HOA, but technically.
Well, a lot of them are individually, a lot of them are individually, it's not owned by all, all by one owner.
No, it's not, but.
There's twenty-four units and, I don't know, how many of the previous owner, but I know there's individual owners in there, 'cause I've seen it.
Well, I heard it, the developer owns a lot of them, 'cause they couldn't sell them.
Sure.
Yeah, so.
And then all the taps were all set up when it was constructed, which is not normal either.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Motion to adjourn, please.
That was part of the.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All favor, aye?
Aye.
Both?
Aye.
Do you have something you wanted to say, Brian?
No.